I call this regular session of the Red Oak City Camp to order this Monday, March 3rd, 2025, here at 5:30 at the Red Oak Fire Station located at 1904 North Broadway. Just a reminder that this is being recorded and will be available on our YouTube channel. Also, please silence your phones. And if you need to have a side conversation, we just ask that you would excuse yourself to outside. Reminder, this is a regular meeting of the city council. And it does get hard for us to hear if other people are having inside conversations. So, um, number two invocation by Pastor Ricky Rory of the Crossroads Community Church. And he's joining us online. So please stand.
Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sorry. All right. Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, on this National Anthem Day, Lord, we're not just thankful just for the city of Red Oak and Montgomery County, but our state, our national, and our international governments. Lord, we thank you for all the people that have been called to service, to serve this great town, city that we live in. Lord, we pray for those that are hurting, whatever it may be, if it is physically, spiritually, emotionally, mentally, we just pray for your grace and mercy. Lord, now as the agenda is at hand, Lord, we just pray that you will be in the midst of it, that everything will be done to please you, to be decent and in order. And Lord, we thank you for all that you are doing, have done, and will do through this city government. To you be the glory as we proceed tonight and always. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Adam, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I should have grabbed this. Roll call. Ashley?
Bradley?
Here. Bill?
Here.
Right off?
Here.
Isaac?
Uh huh.
Hebrink?
Here.
Um, but for approval of the agenda, but I just want to note that 10 and 10.1 will be just one conversation, just so that we have the opportunity to have that full conversation. So, I would take a motion to approve the agenda. The amended agenda.
Motion to approve.
Bradley?
I'll second.
Right off? Roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Hebrink?
Yes.
Bradley? No. We do not have any proclamations or special notices. Um, number seven is public comments. Just a reminder that everyone who has signed in is to come to the podium, state your name and your address. Um, and you will have three minutes. You will get a 30 second, a reminder when you're 30 seconds from being at the end of your time. And we just ask that you be respectful and keep your voice to a normal tone that we can hear. Thank you. Beau Harris?
Beau Harris. 2104 Sunny Slope Drive. The answer to Red Oak's appearance problem is enforcement of the city's nuisance ordinances. You reached up an oath of office to do that, and the very first duty listed under city administrator is supervision and enforcement of city ordinances. Why don't you enforce our nuisance ordinances? You said you would. How many citywide cleanup days has this city held over the years? And we still have the same junk, junk vehicles, old discarded household appliances, dilapidated and dangerous buildings we've had for decades. Councilmember Hebrink, you're my board councilperson. Councilmember Bradley, you're the outlarge councilmember. I challenge the two of you to walk me through, start to finish, the city's municipal infraction process. I would like to learn how much time and how much money is actually needed um, to attain compliance. Would we pick out a nuisance property, follow it through the process, and report back to the community? How about it? Chums accepted? Furthermore, as law-abiding taxpayers who follow the rules, you now propose to charge us to haul some violators accumulated junk away. So far this year, the city's answer to improving Red Oak's appearance is to take away our freedom to choose how we recycle and how we want to haul garbage, who we want to haul garbage. And now you want to take our hard-earned money and use it to haul someone else's nuisance away. Why is it our expense and our responsibility to enforce the nuisance laws? I had an elderly, I had an elderly neighbor on fixed income tell me that every time the city charges another fee, it means less groceries and less medication for them. How sad is that? A community, a community is often judged by how they treat their less fortunate citizens. Over time, enforcement of the city's nuisance ordinance, four things would happen. Red Oak City officials would have upheld their oath of office. Red Oak's appearance will improve. Nuisance violators will realize the city is serious about abating nuisances and will begin to police their properties rather than pay hefty fines. And lastly, the city treasury from the fines collected can, can hold a future citywide cleanup needing, without needing to impose on freedoms of their pocketbook. And one final thought, imagine a large corporation
30 seconds.
With a couple hundred jobs wanting to locate Southwest Iowa, and they want to tour Red Oak. Mayor, which streets would you drive them down and which streets would you avoid? And suppose during the observation of the community, they ask if we had any nuisance ordinance. Would you answer honestly and say yes, but we don't enforce them? Do you think they're going to be more impressed with our garbage, imagine garbage cans or the fact that we enforce the laws? I can see them reporting back to headquarters, the best view
That's time.
of Red Oak Island was in their rearview mirror.
Thank you, Bill. Um, next would be Ann Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, I, I think that sometimes I'm wishing to
Click your address. Okay.
Uh, Ann Stewart, 1001 East Washington Avenue, uh, and also, um, uh, 404 East Avenue. Sorry.
Okay.
You're applying.
Yeah. Right. Um, yeah, anyways, uh, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, I, I think that sometimes, uh, when you're trying to fix a problem, which, you know, that there are problems, um, you cannot intentionally hurt or, you know, harm uh, people. And I, I think in the case of this mandatory garbage proposal, uh, it, that's one of those cases. Um, there is 30% that, uh, that right now are managing their trash, just not with the current trash carriers, or at least the two main ones. Um, there isn't much information as yet as to what those 30% are actually doing. Uh, legal, if it's illegal, then maybe we need to look into that. Um, I, I think that, um, that is something that should be looked into before we start, um, you know, uh, hiring a company to, to do trash services, if that's the way that you decide to go. Um, because again, that will greatly affect more than a quarter of the people here uh, in Red Oak. And I, I know it's not your intent to, um, you know, make it harder for people to uh, live here. And certainly not to discourage people from moving here because it's so expensive. As, uh, um, as far as, uh, um, what you guys do to make these meetings, you know, available to people, I really appreciate that. Uh, through the Zoom meetings, and you do keep us well up to date and informed with all the information. I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that that is very much appreciated. I know that's a lot of hard work that goes into all of that, so I think
30 seconds.
And, um, well, that's, uh, pretty much all I had to say on the subject. And, um, I know you guys will diligently think about, uh, all of the, the information that you get and maybe seek out some more information before you make decisions.
Thank you, Ann. Ron King. Again, state your name and your address, please.
King, 509 West Washington Avenue, Red Oak Island. And I want to talk about if it's not broke, don't try to fix it. Everybody that I talk to like it the way it is on their garbage and their recycling. And the recycling is, it can kind of really concern me too, because it's someplace where I can go to it anytime I want to, whether it's one time a week, two times a week. I don't have to fold something for a week or two weeks, then pull, go to the curb, somebody come and pick it up. And then I, I want to go to, uh, you know, we have like 20 some thousand people in this town, the, the right by. They camped all over the city. There was in every alley, every, every street. And I've not heard one bad word about the city of Red Oak being junky or having trashies looking town. I heard nothing but good things, how nice Red Oak was. So I assumed that maybe we're not as bad as what we're trying to make it look like. And as far as appliances, uh, used appliances and stuff your people want to get rid of, I know four or five people in town who love to come to your house and pick them up for you for nothing. They'll carry them out of your basement, they'll carry them wherever, and they'll dispose of it. And it would help them because they make part of their living offices. And they pay your water bills, they pay for stuff by doing this. And that would save you a lot on your citywide cleanup. Uh, and then I don't understand if you, when you do this, if you, why do you want to put this fee on the water bill? People have a hard enough time paying their bills now. I believe with a city this size, that they could find someplace in their budget to pay for this out of the city budget. It's four times, you know, you're talking about four times a year. That seems very simple to me. That, that, that could be done either that way, or I don't know, maybe the hotel motel
30 seconds.
Hotel motel tax could be close to this, maybe not for cities, that's what they use it for, for most of the time around the square or places like that. But this would help the whole city. And the, the people that choose something that have to pay a water bill or something instead of medication or food or their health insurance. I think that there's, there's a better way to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, Winnet Bruce?
Hi. If there's something that comes up, question, I'd be glad to answer or something. I really don't need, I don't need to say this.
Okay. Uh, Jason Reistrom?
I'd be fine with this one.
Okay. Kevin Carlyle?
Uh, same as Winnet, I just signed in just.
Okay. Great. Let's see, number eight is consent agenda. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of the city council meeting on February 18th, 2025, and also February 24th, 2025. Just acknowledgement of the receipt of the minutes from the Airport Commission on 2/27/25. And we have no liquor licenses on this particular agenda.
So moved.
Bills?
I'll second.
Hebrink? Roll call. Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Hebrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Uh, number nine is the March 3rd, 2023 claims, city claims to be paid.
I'll make that motion as well.
Bills? I'll second. Bradley? Uh, roll call. Isaac?
Yes.
Hebrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Okay. Um, number 10 and number 10.1, um, per the conversations that people had provided to us. Uh, Lisa spent time working with our city attorney on a ordinance regarding cleanup. This is not just cleaning up of parcels. This is, this would be something that would be available to everyone. So if you have beds or mattresses or, um, furniture or anything like that. So this would be like a curbside, I think is what we proposed. Is the first one would be a curbside, uh, to inspire people to actually get rid of the things that they might have in their yard. Also, it would include a $4 fee that would be on the city, um, utility bill, and it would be, we would be moving the date of 30 days uh, to accumulate trash to 14, which is two weeks. And then also it would include a garbage collector permit fee for haulers, which is not uncommon either. We do permit fees for a number of other things. So, um, and then I also have on here the request for proposal for haulers. So, just so that the full council can have a full conversation. And I guess I think we should start with potentially the ordinance so that we could walk through that, Lisa? Maybe, um, to help people understand what that is.
Can I clarify something first, though? I think that when we first talked about it, we thought it was going to be for additional $4 for each cleanup. But it's my understanding that it's per month. And so I think that when we, when I first talked about it anyhow, I understood it was going to be $4. Lisa explained to me the cost involved.
Yes.
That it would be, and she'll tell you about that, the cost that's involved would require the $4 bill per month.
Correct. People do not quite understand how much, what the cost of that would be. And so we also don't know exactly what the amount would totally be. Um, but we would hold at least one curbside one, and then, um, one where we would control, like you would have to prove your address as you're bringing stuff, and it would probably be located on the wastewater facility out in our street department area.
It could include two curbside pickups?
Depending on the actual cost. The costs all relate to the tonnage fees and the land, the, the transfer station fees. So, and then we would put that out for a bid for the haulers to, to actually help us with that. So, do you want to clarify any of that, Lisa?
Again, um, I would not have guessed it was as expensive as it would have been. Um, my experience, as I've explained, has been where you have a single hauler, and as part of the fee that you pay, you have a spring and fall cleanup. So when we had those kinds of fees in similar sized communities, I think that the haulers in that case, because of the significant amount of business that they're receiving, basically only charged us for the actual tipping fees. Um, in those communities, uh, similarly sized, we maybe spent like $8,000 to $10,000 a year is what the hauler billed us separately on top of our normal monthly fees for the curbside service that we were receiving. When I spoke to, uh, Shannon Dohas sanitation, they had recently done a similarly sized curbside trash pickup, like this would be a junk pickup, and they said that the bill was $35,000. In addition, with Clint working in Atlantic, he reached out because he knew that they had done it. I was super surprised to hear that they had city employees doing it with dump trucks, which seems uh, super complicated and difficult that we don't really have the appropriate equipment. So they were just throwing things in the back of city dump trucks, and that their expense between people time and disposal was $45,000. So if you take that and you take that we charge everybody the $4 a month times the 2,400 residential houses, even though we have 2,600 customers, we wouldn't be intending for it to be a commercial or industrial uh, customer service that we would provide. This would only be for residential. So that yields us $115,000 over the course of a year. So that's where, when Bree and I, the attorney, worked on the ordinance, we set a minimum of one. I think it's fair to say that the first one would likely be the most expensive, only because people haven't had the opportunity to dispose of things before. Uh, we would certainly, I think the council's commitment would be that whatever we're bringing in.
Yeah, can, whoever's phone is making noise, can you silence that?
Okay, so obviously we're not using the $115,000 for anything other than the collection of trash. And so whether we decide that the first one, whatever it ends up costing, uh, maybe we can assume that future ones would be less. Uh, we had originally talked about having it be a drop-off site, which I think is pretty common in a lot of communities. But I had people say something to me that, you know, to some degree, we're defeating the purpose. If there are people that have things that would be used, uh, where they would be able to utilize this service, and that at least for that beginning time, that there might be people that don't have the ability to get it to the drop-off site. And so, uh, having it be curbside is more cost, or, or is more impactful in terms of that. Um, so the $4 comes from that. If we say it's $2 or $3, that just means we have that much less to spend on it. Um, and I think it's fair to say, um, I don't think that the $4 even pays for four of them, but maybe it could pay for two curbsides and one, at least one drop-off, you know, that we could do a variety of that. But again, it would be as we, you know, as each one happens, then we would clearly have proof of those bills and be able to bring it to the council, set one of them for sure, and then go from there. That's why three wrote it for, you know, at least there would be one provided. I think there's no reason that it will only be one if we do the $4. Um, a lot of the code is similar to what it was before. I know that, um, I had, we all had an email today talking about why it's our place to limit the garbage uh, that a household gives out. But I know that that's, um, I think partly contractual with the landfill. That's what the code has always said. And so, uh, it, it talks about those three cans, which are, I think they're each 33, 35 gallons, that each household, correct, Len and Kevin?
Three.
So that's been common. So we tried to copy a lot of that. Um, if they can have three, of course, people, uh, think, well, what if I get missed? Well, clearly, we're not going to enforce the code to say that if something happened to one of the hauler's trucks and they couldn't get there for a week, that we're all of a sudden running around town to all their customers and giving them a citation for having four or five the next week because something happened. Um, so it's really up to the council. We talked about, obviously, the curbside has been the focus. Um, lots of community members, uh, have said that that's not what they support. And so I think the council's efforts to do something, if you recall on the comprehensive plan, there were two items listed in there. One was the curbside program, and one was a citywide cleanup um, to address the city's budget. There's always something that you can cut from somewhere else, but the reasons that we have other things in there right now, there really isn't um, any pot of money that would be appropriate to spend it on there. Um, you know, I think Mr. King brought up the tourism money. I don't think the way our code is written would allow for that to be spent on something like that. Uh, if it was related to a community event or anything, then you could do that. So I don't know that that's an appropriate use of those funds. Um, Bree really has, you know, kind of stayed, again, our attorney has stayed tuned in to what's been going on. She tried to find what she thought was a model ordinance to be able to address some of the things. She liked that there were some different definitions. In terms of having the haulers be licensed, that's very common in communities, and really creates a, an official relationship between us and every hauler. So we talk about the fact that right now people don't know that the number that we're using is the accurate number. But one of the things then, by having everybody be licensed, is that we have a way to collect the data from them on an annual basis. If they're obviously new to the community, the first time that they would sign up, you wouldn't have that data. But then at the annual renewal, they would be able to tell us how many customers they're serving. And then we have more accurate information as to some future decision. If we decided to do a curbside program in the future, we would know that anybody that's serving the community, uh, can tell us that. The only exception to, uh, the current requirement and in the draft code that has that you have to have a hauler, the only exception that you get is to haul your own garbage off your own house or your own business. And so other than that, someone has to hire someone that's licensed. You wouldn't, you know, if you're driving your own stuff to the landfill, uh, if that's the way you choose to, or you had a, you know, there's people that have talked about having, um, their household garbage be put in their business dumpster. I think that there's a few people that think that. They obviously then are taking care of their own trash. But if they're letting everybody else bring their trash to a dumpster, then that wouldn't be legal under this new draft code.
Some of the landlords also dispose of trash, so they would, as long as they own it and they're removing it, they would be compliant by doing that.
Right, as long as they own the parcels themselves. So if that's part of what a landlord wants to provide their tenants, that they choose to go and drive around and pick up their own, as long as they own it, that would also be allowed. Uh, there's no changes to recycling in this draft ordinance. We're just still doing the $2.90 with the dumpsters downtown. And uh, again, the, the licensing kind of talks about in there for the licensing of the haulers, or in this case, we call them the collectors, kind of talks about the type of information. Um, while, uh, one of the benefits that would be to them is that by us having a, an official relationship with them as a licensed hauler in our community, they would, uh, as a benefit to them, be listed on our city website, that these are the haulers that you can contact that are licensed here. They would also, as somebody comes in to sign up for service, we would be giving a list of who is licensed in our community. So instead of people having to figure that out on their own, they would be given that, and that's a benefit to the haulers that become licensed here, if that's what they choose to do. And I just think it would be better, better information for us. Um, it's by no means a moneymaker in terms of us getting somewhere between $2 and $3,000, depending on how many haulers actually signed up. Um, that, you know, the council can decide that amount, but I've seen communities that charge super cheap, and then some that do $500, $1,000, different things like that. So, uh, the intent of the code was to try and address what we talked about at the last meeting that Sharon had brought up, and then we talked about at the Q and A. Then over the weekend, for those that kind of said we were trying to slip something in at the last minute, I thought the focus of tonight's meeting would be that. And in fairness to some of the council members who said we'd like to at least still talk about the RFP and what that means, or how we balance what people are paying right now and an additional fee. And that overall, it does cost the community more as opposed to exploring the idea of an RFP and what those prices would be. And so after communicating with the mayor yesterday, I came in and amended it legally. And that's where we added it, so that you have the opportunity as the elected officials to just be able to talk about both, and that no one could say if they wanted to talk about the RFP that it wasn't on the agenda. So that was the only reason for adding it. There was no purposeful intent to do it at the, uh, last few hours before the 24-hour rule.
This way, everyone still can select their own hauler. Um, it's not going to require people to have the specific containers that we talked about. Um, they would have to be in compliant with the type of container. I think the challenge is not very many people use the fly-tight lids or use lids on many of them. Um, and they need to be so that they're not leaking. Um, that type of thing. But, I mean, I feel like this is a it's hitting the things that the majority of people were complaining about, sticking away their right to, to choo- choose, and also the containers. And it would benefit everyone, because I don't know who wouldn't have something that they could put out that they would normally have to take somewhere else. I mean, if you're remodeling a bedroom or doing something like that, you would have stuff that you could put out, I would think. So, I think it would benefit.
Again, I can only speak to being in communities that have curbside service and every single time we had a spring and fall cleanup, almost every household had something out there. And they, in those cases, had mandatory trash where every single week they had a cart that was issued They had a cart that was issued to them and they always were able to get rid of their garbage and almost every household had something out. Some had piles. We'd always think like, how do you already accumulate this much stuff in six months, but. Um, and it was super popular. Months before spring and fall cleanup in the communities I've worked in, people would start asking like, when is it? You know, they'd plan ahead. They knew that those are the times that they could get rid of things that didn't fit in the carts. Um, and it was highly utilized. So yes, I suppose there's people that maybe think they would not have that opportunity, but. Kind of, as you said, I think that people will utilize it.
The other thing is people complain because we would hold a cleanup event and then the line would be so long. And it would be from people from the county or whoever knows. And by the time they would get up there, it'd already be done. So this would not put a stop to that, like it would be.
We'll make sure that we have, if we do a curbs or excuse me, a drop off. We will obviously make sure that we have enough roll offs to take that. We will have it be identification at the door. We would have to have city staff be there on those days to be able to make sure that the people who are paying for it are the only people who are allowed to take advantage of it if we did a drop off.
Like work with the licensed vendors as well for the roll offs.
So can I ask you a question? I, so if we, if we do this for a while and. We determine that, you know, we've done some substantial cleanup and we don't need to do it four times a year. I mean, do we can go back and. Cut that fee perhaps?
Sure, absolutely.
I think too that we're speaking, talking about the elderly people that don't have, can't move their stuff out. I think there are organizations or. Um, even volunteers that would help. You know, they can say, I need help putting my stuff out to the curb side and I think we could get organizations and, and you know. High school volunteers to even help the elderly with that, put up to the curb side when we have it available.
Yeah, we could certainly have, like you can contact city hall if you need assistance. You know, maybe the deadline is a week or two before the actual curbside day and then be able to reach out for.
Well, how many hours before? Some people wouldn't be able to get it out right, you know, within a twenty four hour period. What were you thinking?
I mean, again, I only have my experience where I've worked, but people usually put it out the full week of, like if you did it on a Friday, Saturday. People put it out on Monday and scavengers know about your day and more power to them if they come and take more stuff off the curbs. That doesn't end up going in a landfill and doesn't cost the community money. So, you know, we'd probably be encouraging people to put it out at least a few days before. But for the signing up, if someone needed help, you know, that would be. Something where if we reached out to school groups, church groups, things like that and see if. Groups are willing to assist. We'd obviously want to make sure we have people willing to assist.
Especially heavy things. I think that people just. Put them in their garage or whatever, because they aren't able to get them. You know, put it out with the garbage. So I think that would be a good idea. We can do it.
We certainly do that.
Well, and as Lisa and I were talking through this too, I mean, we wanted it to be frequent enough. That it will take a really solid stab at getting things cleaned up. If we have one, that doesn't mean necessarily that we'll make that big of an impact, but if we have a couple. That should make a pretty significant impact. So, and we are already enforcing codes. We are already enforcing our nuisance codes. So.
Or are you only going to take, I mean, other items, I mean, extra items, you're not going to take trash?
Well, right now the code, right, the code says that you have to have a way to get rid of your garbage every fourteen days. So. You know, I, that's one of the things I heard from some of the elected officials was saying, is this encouraging people to not have trash service? Um, but we still have to enforce the code and it says every fourteen days now, if they pass this, that you have to give it a bit. So. If there's a black bag out there, I'm sure that I wouldn't think we're not taking it, but we would have to say to any of the haulers that are doing it. If you can tell that this is weekly trash, then you need to leave it and we would issue them on.
So discussion?
It seems though you're, you're. You're, you're trying to slim the progress down, but every time I hear you're adding something to it, there's a cost. So the cost isn't going to be any cheaper. It's going to be higher in the long run than what it is now. Because you keep adding it up.
You mean, people pay the current trash fee?
There's no doubt about it.
I want to throw something in here, John. You know, the, the, the ad hoc committee that came to the council. And said they wanted their option to choose their haulers and this and that, so that they would be more than happy to pay additional fees. To do the citywide cleanup and that was right in the council minutes.
Yep, it was.
Mr. Gross spoke on behalf of everyone that signed the petition, saying that everyone would be willing to pay that.
And more.
I think we have to look to that. You know, we can't stand still in what we're doing in this community. We have to try something different. If we don't try it, where are we going to go, you know? And so I think giving it, I think a year, if we try it, it's going to make a difference. If we see something different, we can go try something else in another year, but I, I think it myself, I think it will make a huge difference. I know people that have stuff that they probably just can't afford to or take it out, you know, go to the landfill or whatever.
Or don't have a truck.
My feeling. And if you're only paying what forty eight dollars a year? Extra, I, and if you need help with it, I'm sure their organizations would probably. Try to help you with that extra amount every year. We could maybe work on that. I don't know. There's this. I just think it's a plus for the community to make some headway because we have to do something. And we tried, we've talked about curbside pickup and we've talked about this for so long. Let's do something about it. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
This is very similar to a dog chasing his tail. He's never going to catch it, but he's not going to stop and try to figure out what the hell he's doing. You people just keep going on and going on and going on and you're, you're still running in that same circle. You're not, you're not stopping to, to realize what you're actually doing.
So John, you're saying that, but how, what would your position be then if you had to change things?
If I had to what?
If you were changing things according to what we proposed, what would your proposal be?
There wouldn't be any changes. It's working fine now.
It is broken.
But we need us, we need.
What do we need?
Pardon me, what?
What do we need?
I think we need, we need to focus on. One of our, one of our goals of the comprehensive plan was to clean the community. How many of those comprehensive meetings did you go to?
I'll tell you, adding to your garbage bill does not bring up the community. No way in God's creation.
John, we're not adding to the garbage bill. We're creating a citywide cleanup. It has nothing to do with your garbage bill, John.
And I do think there's some people that are confused when we. It's municipal trash that the city is going to buy our own trucks and we are not doing that. That is not municipal trash. Service. This is. I just hope people are understanding that the city is not going to buy trucks and do trash pickup. That is not what this is. And charged for it. That's not it.
Yeah, respectfully, John, I, I see where you're coming from. I do. But that's your opinion. There's four other people at this table that have opinions as well. We have to do it this way to have these discussions. I can't just call each council member on here and say, hey, do you think this is a problem? We should do something about it. How, what do you think we should do? And how would you vote on that? We can't do that because that's violating open meeting laws. So things, if there are things that the council wants to talk about, this is the way it has to be done. We don't have a choice. Even if you don't think it's broken, there are others that think something needs to change. So we have to be able to talk about it in this capacity. There's, there's no option there. Because this is how it works. We can't just, again, call each other on the phone and say, what do you think? That's a bad idea and that's asking for trouble. So even when things are put on a, on an agenda, even if it's late, it's not meant to sneak anything in, but. If it's not on here, technically we shouldn't even be talking about it. So if it might be part of the discussion, it's better that we have it on the agenda. To be able to discuss it or make action if we wanted to, rather than it not. But again, this is the way this works. We have to be able to have discussions if there are people that think something needs to change and obviously there are.
So Sharon, would you just propose just one year of the forty eight dollars? Try it, see where it goes and reevaluate it?
That would be my feeling. I think we can do a lot.
One year.
One year.
And again, you can't really set a code for a year that expires, but you can commit to in a year, we put it back on the agenda.
Yeah. We could say, I have, from this date, we come back to it. What were the pros? What were the cons?
Right, we do the licensing. We'll have accurate information about how many people, you know, assuming that the. Four main haulers that are here already, they would be required as a part of the licensing to report to us what they've been doing. So then that's a tool to be able to have the accurate information. Before we assess a year from now, we could ask them to, you know, to re-up.
And, and when we talk about the citywide date, I mean, just when we talk about putting things out to the curb. And we go to some of these, uh, codes, you know, how the hours it should be out. You know, are we going to be breaking that code just for that one day?
No, I mean, we can certainly, before we have the final reading, we can say for citywide cleanup week that that doesn't apply.
One, one of the questions that I asked Lisa was. How much can we put out in the curb? There are some people that have collected for years, you know, so there will be, uh. What, what did you say for, there will be so many feet that you could pile high and.
Well, we could do that, like some cities that will have like curbside yard waste. In their code where like the city comes around, they'll say you can have no more than a pile of ten feet wide by. Three feet deep by whatever feet tall. I mean, if you feel like somebody's going to put sixteen years worth of crap out there, then we could certainly have a limit.
A kitchen remodel or a bathroom remodel that you're putting all your drywall, old, uh. Cabinets and everything.
Right, and there would be direction to whatever haulers help us.
Yeah.
They would understand what our restrictions are if we're going to put a restriction out there. And then again, in the communities that I've worked in, the haulers would report back and say, hey, there was a. An appliance that was separate or whatever it is. Uh, that wasn't allowed, like in a lot of communities I've been in, if you wanted an appliance, you paid extra. And so then they would be on a list. So if there was an appliance without one, the, the haulers would come back and say. We found ten properties that were not in compliance with what they had to get rid of. And then it was on the city to contact those ten houses and say, hey, your stuff didn't get picked up because. Here's the reason you weren't in compliance. You need to get it off the curb.
So I think.
So, so I want to throw something out there real quick. So I've heard the, the word remodel a couple of times in this conversation. I just want to make it clear, this is not for people to put their, their construction debris out on the street. This, this is, I mean, that's where you need to, uh, call one of the haulers and have a dumpster placed. Uh, yeah, this is not for construction debris.
Again, most communities will say this is what's excluded. So like you might say, no tires, no batteries. No construction equipment, no concrete. Again, that, that's pretty common and we can work with the haulers on what is expected. It's not that kind of stuff. And you don't have to have that in the code. You would basically just have that.
Use lawnmowers.
I mean, yeah, we'd have to again, discuss it, but it's whatever we think and we would work with the haulers that are going to help us. And then it would be as part of the advertising and they would know, like if we said no lawnmowers, then they'll leave it and. We could even give them stickers or tags with a zip tie on it. That when they get to that house, if they show up there and there's a lawnmower, they can snap a tag right on there that says rejected.
But I think that if we do plenty of advertising well ahead of time, I'm talking a couple of months and have the date ready for everyone. That they can start accumulating those things that they want to put on the curb. And I think that makes a big difference with the list of things that they can and they cannot put up the curb.
I, I want to go, I just want to ask a question to people on the council here. I mean, they, we, we had a person that spoke today. Tonight, and they said, we did so many community wide cleanup projects. Inform me what those were, because I just remember doing George Mayer cleanup days and that was just yard waste. Am I correct on that?
When I first came back here, I asked about that and they continually told me that it's too expensive. That we have to haul it out of the community and that's why they quit doing it.
Yeah, I don't know the last time there was a citywide cleanup done. An actual like one that we're talking about.
So I can, I can throw a little bit of information out here. So until John took my place on the landfill committee, I was kind of involved in that. And the landfill association actually did a, a, a couple of events that they had minimal funding for that, like. The mayor discussed earlier, you know, the line was longer than the, than the bins would haul. And then they had, uh, actually one of our local, uh, uh, in industries, uh, I want to say, uh, Clarios actually. Paid, paid for a, an electronics recycle event. And you know, other than that, there really hasn't been much of anything happened, other than what, you know, private people have done and has been happening through donations.
We had one last year, uh, that was led by high school students.
Yeah, but it really wasn't a citywide cleanup on the scale that we're talking about.
Now that, Adam, that was the one, that one you're talking about was the one that was funded by the landfill association.
Okay.
Yeah, and the landfill association is countywide.
I mean, the line was more longer. They had to stop at a certain point because they couldn't.
Well, the tires version.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, if we're going to do this, we have to do it right.
Exactly.
All hands on deck. City staff is going to have to be there. We're checking addresses. We may have to have multiple haulers, like everybody that's licensed, please bring your roll offs and like that they can each. Pull them away so that we're prepared and we're not sending anybody away if we do a drop off. Thus, again, I think why it's probably beneficial, even though it's a lot more expensive to just do a curbside. So if we say we're coming on whatever day and it takes extra days because there's that much more, it just takes extra days. But we can control it.
Be wise to divide it into like the city and the three sections and just do one section. Like one, one week, one the next, and then that would, people would know which is their time. And that, I mean, I'm just saying it might be better. You can't, you can't do it all at once.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to, um. It might be over two weeks. I don't know that we want to do a week at a time.
And the landfill can accept all of it too.
Yeah.
Like, I'll say that I like a lot of what's in here. I like the idea of a citywide cleanup, obviously. I think it's a little much. I think it's a little too aggressive. I think maybe not aggressive isn't the word, but. If it was too optimistic, doing it four times a year for four dollars, I would almost lean more towards something like two dollars a month and do it like twice a year, spring and a fall. And reassess at that point and then say, this is doing a good job because. I'm not saying that four dollars hurts me, but I get where the comments come from and I. Didn't, it didn't take comments for me to consider that, that that is an additional cost on people's utility bills. Part of it, I have an issue with that too, is because. I know there was some comments said that, uh, creating a. Mandatory curbside pickup is punishing people, but really it's not. Because you're really punishing those that don't have service yet that forces them to sign up, those that are already taking care of their trash as you should as being part of a community. Wouldn't change for them. So I didn't, I didn't agree on that point. I think on this, this does punish everybody at this point. And I don't know if I like the word punish, but. It does affect all, even those that are currently taking care of things. I know that. We did have it spoken that those on the petition would be gladly to pay two to three dollars more a year or per month on their bill. Uh, I'm one of those that did not sign it, but I do pay for trash service and I would not like to pay extra for my trash service to pick up somebody else's trash. So I do have an issue with that. Um, but it's got to, I feel like at the same time, what you said, Lisa. We can't just cut it all out of the budget every year on these things, uh, because then where do you begin to cut those services out for other things? But that's why I. I'm more of somebody to meet the middle and say, yeah, I don't really like four dollars on my bill, but. I could probably stand two bucks for like a semi-annual cleanup, a spring and a fall.
I just don't think that two dollars would be enough money. If we're comparing to other communities, you'd only get fifty seven thousand dollars.
But you were, you were.
But that also cuts down the amount of times you do it per year, or you say, we pay two dollars a month and then. Whatever that covers, whether it's one or two, that's what it covers and that's all we do.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying whatever the number is when we run out and if. If that thirty five to forty five thousand dollars is the right number, which again, like I've never had it be that we paid. A hauler to do it separately. It was just always part of a curbside program. Um, I would not have guessed that it would have been that much. So to me at three or four dollars, you would have been able to get them quarterly at what I'm used to.
So wouldn't it be to our, uh, for the, the best thing that we could do is get the request or proposal. The RFP from the haulers to see what it would cost and then bring it back.
You're saying for this?
For this.
Not for regular weekly?
No, not for regular weekly, but yeah.
Like actual numbers on what a cleanup would look like?
I think we need to know.
But you're not going to get a price because.
Well, that, yeah, that's going to depend on what's, that's going to depend on what's gets set out, Sharon. I mean, there's no way to project that.
They won't give us a price on that because that's, if it's ten thousand and the fees, fifty thousand. They won't give us a price on that because that's, if it's ten thousand and a piece, fifty thousand. Do we wanna allow the two haulers here to talk a little bit about?
Do you guys care if the two haulers?
Do you wanna get a little bit of input from them on what they would envision, how it would work with prices? It's up to you guys.
I'd like to hear.
Okay.
Um just add some things, Lynette deals with the roll-offs every day, you know, I've just got a few. When you're talking about citywide cleanup. What you, I've heard.
Can you come up please so that, make sure you're in the picture?
I wonder if we should not.
So again, you know, we do it in Griswold too, so.
But you do drop off, right?
We, yeah, we do the drop off, like we, we talked about that. So I've heard uh construction material. You know, Brian addressed that.
Which is normally no.
Yes, that is the, the day-to-day stuff that Lynette and I would take. In my opinion, does not need to be handled with a, a citywide cleanup. Citywide cleanup for me is tires, appliances. Not saying that mattresses and some of that stuff wouldn't be, but we pick that up. We can't take tires. We can't take automotive batteries, we can't, we, you know, the appliances, um stuff like that could all be. You know, you contact a scrap iron guy, they're gonna come get your appliances for nothing. Um refrigerators, anything with uh freon, you know, that's where you would run into a little bit of an issue. Um so as far as citywide cleanups, I understand like what you're saying when the citizens were paying for it in your communities. So yeah, they were already paying for it. I don't think that's necessarily a good thing.
So Kevin, so when they set, set things out extra like mattresses, refrigerators, do you charge them extra?
We don't, we wouldn't pick up the refrigerators, but like the, the mattresses, you know, yeah, they.
You charge them extra for it, don't you?
Yes.
We have to.
And you do too.
The landfill charges that extra.
But see, so what's your charge if you set, say, a refrigerator out? What, so if somebody sets a pile of that, what is, what do you charge them?
We don't take it.
Is that what, what we're talking about with freon or like a dishwasher? If it's plastic, like these newer dishwashers, yeah, we contain those, but like stoves, refrigerators.
Okay.
Anything like that could be scrapped.
Somebody sets a bedroom set out there, we don't wanna, what do you charge it?
Furniture.
It kinda depends.
Depends on.
Kind of.
Four dollars, six dollars, ten dollars.
Do you decide after you pick it up? Uh they let, they report it to us and we kinda have a standard fee that we do, that we have.
An old, an old couch. Old couch.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty bucks, uh recliner.
Fifteen.
So that's the whole thing, like that's where like this forty dollars or twenty dollars a year, like it adds up in like two little things.
I see so many couches sitting out on the, they expect people to pay them up, you know. And I'm not taking away from what you do, but I'm just saying, you are charging more, you know, you charge, and I don't blame you.
Yeah.
We need to do that. So that's what we're doing. We're gonna have to charge cuz we have to pay the landfill too.
Right, and that's why, and and I don't disagree with that. What I don't disagree with is if you put it on there and you're doing your citywide cleanup, you know, you're, you're not necessarily taking business away from us. Because we're not, I mean, we're charging just barely what we can do to get rid of it, but you're allowing Adam to set out a couch and a recliner and he got all the furniture and well, I'll just hold it for six months or a year and then I'll put it out and I don't have to pay to get rid of it.
Yeah, you do.
Well, yes, yes, but.
That was the point of it not being free. Like that's why when we said if we're gonna do this, it can't be free. There has to be a cost.
What's the problem in trying it for years to see?
Yeah, that's what I, but I just, I wondered if, I mean, if we're gonna be in on this and. I, I know that's. Down low on how they're gonna split that up.
You know, kinda be able to discuss with you guys what, you know, I don't think the furniture is.
Please be quiet, sorry.
You know, if there's certain things that we say, that that we think we should be able to take care of and not let them do that, you know? You know, have some discussion on that. Um and maybe that won't work and if that's what you guys choose to do, that's fine.
Right.
But, you know, just keep in mind when you say appliances. Those are, those are things that every scrap iron, that scrappers will eat that stuff up. And we, there, there's no expense there.
But then what we need is like if you guys know that, or Mr. King, I think said, there's four people, like we need to know that. And then that's another tool that we can say, like right on our website, the ladies at City Hall who answer the phone. We can say and we can start advertising, if you have junky old appliances that you need to get rid of, here's who to call.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Right, yeah.
And tires are gonna be, tires are a real issue.
Or you know, we're, that, you know, we're not gonna take tires either. We're not gonna take tires. That's, that's, that's something, when, when, when you buy a new tire. There's a, there's a cost on there to take care of that tire on every tire that's sold. And so we're not taking tires in our dumpsters.
Well, I mean, and you're right, they do charge it and then, but that's also how I just, I was at the landfill today and I, somebody slipped four of them underneath on the bottom, in a roll-off.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, not that they would do that in this situation, but they, they don't wanna pay the two dollars extra to get rid of it at, at the at the tire place.
Yeah.
You know, so they're gonna take it home. That's when, now you've got your mosquitoes and, so I mean, that's just something.
We kinda have an idea.
Well, we're just not gonna, we're not gonna take tires like we're not gonna take construction debris.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't take construction.
Which is, I mean, like I said, I'm, I, if we could discuss kinda of how it would go to.
Yeah, there's a lot of things.
So like lumber, let's just say plain lumber.
Yeah.
Two-by-fours, uh sheet, plywood sheeting.
The scrappers will come through your town and get rid of stuff. You'd be surprised.
Yeah, we would take that, I'd take that regularly.
Yeah.
So if we're talking going curbside, you guys have the ability to go with uh some type of vehicle and pick it up? To each person, by each person's house, that, that cleanup day, or do you, are you recommending a drop-off site where you have roll-offs? Roll-offs would be a lot easier, I think.
Some items, definitely.
You know, you get into a mattress and, you know, you put a hundred mattresses in there and we guess we're gonna be full.
Yeah, I, I understand. Like I said, we gotta work with, we are in a transfer station, so.
And then how do we place that? That's the whole other thing, making sure that these are assistance of Red Oak and uh and somebody come from another town.
Well, you're never gonna prevent if you tell your mom that she can bring something to your house and that you can't do it, but if you do drop off. We are going to have city employees there and you're gonna have to fill your ID. We'll help. And we'll have the utility bill list, like whatever it is. I mean, we can start either way. If you think it's better to start with the drop-off. Because that's less expensive and for everybody that's able to get it there, maybe that's the better choice. And I would say if we're gonna go ahead and license the haulers. Then those who are licensed are the ones that get to be part of the service that we provide, cuz it can't be like we have two roll-offs. It's gotta be, there is a load and we do it on a. I need some notice so that I can. Oh, yeah, it would be. And maybe is the landfill, is it true that it's open one Saturday a month?
No, it varies. I think it's open more.
It was, it was opened.
So if we did, like, we would have to do it on one of those days when we pick the day. You're gonna go on Saturday? Well, I don't know. Yeah, that's. That's the most. That's another thing.
We might have to.
I have an idea. This is a, just a thought and I don't even know, Kevin, I haven't even talked to you about this. The prob, you know, we're talking about this problem of people that have trash. What about letting people get caught up if there is such, you know, maybe do the drop-off thing? Get this town, if that's what you want, get the town cleaned up, get this, the trash stuff, um get that started, get it. And then they can get a hauler. People get behind, if they've gotten behind, that's might be part of the problem. They don't know, you know, where to go, what to do about it. And that might be an option to. It's interesting that, like, we have this debate, right? Like, so we say we should have trash and then everybody stands up like, trash, it's all junk. But thank you for at least saying that, because I feel like everyone thinks we're insane for saying that there's trash. Because we, you know, we have to stop them.
And that, and that's the other thing too, a lot, some of that is, is when they find, when we finally figure out that they're jumping from husband, wife and kids and nephews and whatever back and forth, that you know, we communicate to keep it better, to keep better track.
But I, you know, if you get it caught up and then we can move forward with all. Again, I would say then we wanna probably do a drop-off because it, you know, it's a lot cheaper for us to do a drop-off and just say.
Downfall is.
The downfall is.
People that can't get it there.
Well, or, you know, and again, completely smaller town, but we do, we offer it. I mean, it's a community building and I think we're down to every other year. If you can't bring it there, you phone the Betterment Committee and somebody will come over and we'll grab it.
Volunteers.
Yeah, our community better, we have a betterment center.
Yeah.
So, you know, then.
I think that's a good idea, Lynette. I mean, we have.
I think that was kinda the idea of this, was to like try to get something going.
So I mean, I didn't want it limited to just people's stuff, you know, the, the big stuff, but, you know.
And we're down to one, one roll-off, I mean, every other year.
It's absolutely gonna be the worst in the beginning.
Yeah, the first one will be the worst.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
First one will be the worst.
Definitely.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Um and that's gonna, and that's gonna be the huge thing with where it might have to be spread out or because it's gonna have to be shut off. They, they will hit it so hard and the landfill will not be able to take it.
And there's. And there is.
Well, we could do like the three wards and we could say if you're in ward one, you get to come this Saturday, like if we did three Saturdays in a row, like ward one is this Saturday, ward two, so again, it's not, I don't think you can spread out if you did curbside for like a week after one, but you could say, you know, in ward one and again, you would advertise with the map. If you're in the pink area, you get to come this Saturday and. Yeah. You know, you would, I think, be able to control it a little better. I mean, there's a lot of conversation to be done about it and we're here, we're here.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you helping us out because we need, we need guys.
That's kinda in the beginning, that's what we wanted to.
I mean, I, I tend to agree with him calling it a spring and fall rather than.
It wasn't four times a year, wasn't, not a lot, never mind. I was gonna take back to work for the rest of us, not what I was looking for.
I agree.
Too many.
Anyway.
All right, well, let's talk the details.
I can see too. I think too, I don't see, I don't see four. I, and you gotta remember, not everybody's gonna participate and that's where uh forty eight dollars is gonna upset some people. And some people will participate.
I still, does it need to be that much?
If we do like a drop-off first, like when that, so you jump in the, maybe a curbside. We could, you know, like she said, get rid of the trash first and then do a curbside. I don't know.
And if we did, even like, you know, there's people that have strong opinions that it's important that it's curbside. But if for the able-bodied people, we could minimize the curbside program. That it not be so overwhelming if we did the drop-off first. And they don't even have to be like crazy far apart, you know. We could do the curbside or the, the drop-off and then, you know, we don't need to wait six months, especially in the first year. And I said one thing, I can, I can, I can kinda give you a rough idea on what a, what a roll-off will cost. If that helps anyway, but um if somebody doesn't have um, doesn't have service, we charge a four fifty deposit, four hundred fifty dollar deposit. So, I mean, that's but again, we wouldn't like, you know, these are just in and out. But I mean, I'm, I'm just kinda giving you a rough idea of, you know, at, at four dollars, that would, that takes care of a lot.
But that doesn't cover the fees of the landfill, right?
Your cost to dump a roll-off? What's your cost to dump a roll?
We charge two hundred dollars. So like I say, that's over sixty loads.
Well, what's, what's your, what's your cost to dump that roll-off, Lynette?
What's that?
What would we get? What did the landfill charge you to dump that?
Well, what, that is, they charge us, well, they charge us sixty, oh, uh sixty-two dollars right now. Um it's going up till I want, and it's going up, yes. But what, but the point would be is what, it doesn't matter what part she's keeping or what's going to the landfill fee. Like, what would your vision be for two hundred, like, we're not gonna pay you a deposit cuz you're gonna have the control of the roll-off, so. Don't worry about that. Round off to two, two twenty-five, something like that would be per roll-off that we would pay? For, for, yeah, for, for my, on my, yeah, on my side, it'd be two hundred.
Two hundred dollars?
That we would pay. Yeah, and then you, then the landfill, but like I said. Then the landfill, so that's what we're saying, like what, but what does that end up to be about? Like I say, we charge, that'd be, it could be anywhere from a hundred to
It depends on what.
Two hundred fifty, but, but what we usually do is we, we, we charge four fifty, that's why I'm saying there's the two fifty that just covers it to make sure that it covers it. Most of the time we give money back, sometimes we don't. I mean, it's hard, you know, it's like fixing feathers without being a smart ass, you know, but it is. But again, that's my point. So two roll-offs is a thousand dollars almost, or nine hundred dollars if it was at the high end. Yeah. Think about how many roll-offs you could fill up from all the towns. Say, that's. It's not. I think the way I figured it. Yeah, if, if it was four dollars for uh for residential only, is that? It's for four dollars is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Total.
For the year. Yeah.
For the year.
Yeah, so um, yeah, that, that would cover sixty roll-offs.
So how many, how many roll-offs do you have?
I don't have many.
So, I mean, you have to make so many dump a day now.
Yeah. But the thing is, when we, that's where we're not, it's not just gonna be batting, like we're gonna have to have, anybody that's licensed may have to be helping to participate. So that you each are there and you can haul off. Yeah, what we can do there too, but I'm just saying that, I was just kinda giving you some figures, some rough figures. Cuz to me, the biggest thing is, if we're doing it, we're all in. Let's go bigger, go home. And we can't say like, oh, sorry, we're two hours in and we're done. We're not taking your stuff.
Exactly right.
I know, but it's all gonna be up to them.
I know.
The landfill, what they'll take. That's, that's gonna be your biggest problem. But then we could do the, but we could do the wards. They have to transfer it, port it, you know. But we could do the three wards. We could say, May seventh is ward one, May fourteenth is ward two and May twenty-first is ward three. But even when they're open on Saturdays, they close at noon. So like I say, it's gonna be dealing with them and how.
Yeah.
I think maybe a, a conversation also needs to occur with the landfill though, then before we do anything, that way we know we can say. Because I'm, I would guess that they could create some special circumstances for us if they know that this is coming, obviously.
And we could say, what's the cost to your staff to stay four more hours?
So I'm gonna throw, I wanna throw a little more mud in the water here, so, so Tim brought up the suggestion of maybe going from four times a year to uh two times a year, perhaps we should do it by ward.
What do you mean?
By what?
Well, we do it by ward, so we'll do the first ward this day, the second ward that day, the third ward another day.
Yeah.
But that's what we were saying.
Yeah, like if you had to have three weeks apart.
He's saying, rather than have through, two events through the whole year that would hit each ward, he's saying one ward, once a year.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm, well, no, 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 no. I'm saying doing, I'm saying doing three times a year.
Right, but are you saying that the three weeks that you would pick for the three different days are all right together, but a week apart or three months apart?
Oh, that wouldn't matter.
Well, but again, if we're trying to clean up like effectively to start, I think they need to be right together. If, if they feel like they can't manage.
No, no, I guess you, I, I'm, I must not be explaining myself well. So, we're talking about going, all right, never mind, I'm, I'm on board with whatever you guys wanna do with that. Tim, I'm good with the twice a year.
I don't even think we can commit to anything except the minimum is once a year, which is how the code is written, because we have no idea what it's gonna cost.
Yeah, that doesn't work.
If we say twice and you wanna go to two dollars and we only have fifty seven thousand dollars and we make people think it's twice, or we say that, and it really does cost us fifty five thousand dollars, then we're done, or you gotta up it.
Yep.
And then I would like to address Bo's for the nuisance. I think a year is gonna make a big difference.
Yep, I would agree.
So if right now, we're trying to address the nuisance problem. And I don't think people have done this enough time to make any waves so far.
I agree with that, Sharon. It's very easy to say, why aren't you just enforcing the codes? Well, we are.
We are.
Again, I don't know how many times you could explain the process that this has to go through in order to abate these nuisances. And then you're not even talking about repeat offenders when they start collecting junk all over again. So it almost looks like it never gets fixed, but it's a continual thing.
So give us time.
I mean, Lisa, how many months have you been here?
Five points five.
How long has Taylor been here?
Uh, an extra four months, so nine.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I will just say it, for the first time in almost twenty years, we have two people that are effectively trying to enforce our nuisance codes for the first time consistently and fairly across the board. You've got to be patient. It takes time. And I guarantee you, Lisa wants to enforce her codes.
And this was set at the city hall. This was set at city hall, six months, correct? To get everything to go through the court system to give them their three notices. Am I right on that?
That's about what it takes.
And the other thing that people need to realize, like we're on a repeat offender here. And what Bree advised me is that if we take it further, like we should, because it's now contempt of court. Not only do we have to pay for their attorney, but if they go to jail, we have to pay while they sit in jail. Like this isn't just like, I think when Bo said like, oh, just use the citation amounts to help pay for it, like right now in a simple case, a seven hundred and fifty dollar citation did not pay for Bree's time. Let alone, and we can't charge for Bree's time, we can only put on the tax roll, the cost of actual abatement. And so. The other thing that I was gonna say is when, uh, Lynette and Kevin and the mayor and I met. Um, as a part of, I think, them being licensed and having these official relationships, which I would like to see us have. Um, I also think that part of, uh, what we would be asking them is that they say that they know, like, they can tell as they drive up and down every alley. As opposed to maybe Taylor's there and doesn't know that like. He drives down the alley the day before all of Lynette's customers get picked up, so it looks like there's garbage. They know more, and so they can, as a part of this trying to do better together, they can try to say to us. Like, as the four or five haulers work together, like, which ones really are the ones that the crap is sitting there too long? And be able to help us because they're out there and as effective as Taylor can be, it's not easy to just drive around and decide which ones are. Fourteen days or thirty days, and if we cut the number of days in half, which is again. Being more effective, hopefully, we can do that, and they both said that they were willing to help us with that, so.
So when we talked about this before, I thought we were talking about ten days on the trash. For accumulation.
I think Bree was kind of okay with ten days, but, um, I'm just uncomfortable saying. Even on a holiday, like, you get backed up to eight days and what if somebody's truck, something happens? Like, I just think two weeks is safer. Was my thoughts, but you can make it whatever days you want. We just don't think it should be seven, for sure.
No, I, I would agree with that.
Thirty, I agree, is too much. And again, that's nothing, that, thirty days has nothing to do with anything that anybody in this room ever had. To do with the policy. It's been thirty days for probably, lord knows how many years.
You know, I just, I just know what, what my trash would look like after a couple of weeks. That's all, that's my only concern there. But, you know, I, I, I do get the, I, I do get the need for some extra time on, on that end.
So tonight, we're only discussing, we're not doing anything other than.
You can do a first reading if you want to keep it moving.
I, I got another question. So let's say we, we, we decided to do it once a year. Once a year, keep everything at four dollars, we do it once a year. And, we work with our, our, the two haulers here, and it comes under budget. What we have, that hundred fifteen thousand, right? That's what we're saying, correct? And it comes in at ninety eight thousand, whatever. I'm just saying, what comes in, what are we gonna do with that extra money?
Well, it's gonna stay there, and a year from now, you guys said you wanna talk about it. So if we say, gosh, after the first year, which should be the worst year, we only needed ninety thousand. Then it would certainly make sense that if you were gonna continue on with the program, then you would say like, let's lower it to three dollars.
So, yeah, so that money then could lower everybody's fee down if we're to continue to do it another year. We could, it'd be knocked down maybe two or three dollars.
I, I just think that, I know it feels like you wanna lower it from four, but I don't think that you're gonna have too much money, unless you're only doing it once a year. If you're doing it once a year. And again, all I was saying is that the code will require us to do it once a year. But your commitment as a council, I would assume, is that whatever amount of money is left after the first one, you're still using that.
Yes.
Whether it's for an additional drop off.
We can approach it a different way. We can decide then, depending on how much.
And the way the code is, just like people have said, like, oh, just use money for this or that, like, when the code says we're collecting a. Room tax at the hotels and the motels, you don't get to pick. To use it on garbage. When it says we're using it for stormwater, we don't get to say use it for recycling. When we collect recycling money, we don't get to use it for garbage. Like, those things are separate funds and we have a legal obligation to spend it as it was collected. As it was intended to be collected and used.
Yes.
That's our obligation. So there would be a separate fund next to the recycling fund. Um, and that's where the money would stay, and then you'll be able to see that money coming in, and then what's, you know, gonna be spent. I just don't, I don't know, especially in the beginning, it's not gonna be cheap. I don't.
And we don't know, we, we can, I mean, we'll just see how it plays out too, if, if we continue to go this route.
Right. I would say, like, if you don't wanna do four, I wouldn't go down to two. I'd try three then.
That's two.
Two, I just think is, you know, you're gonna spend two almost.
Right.
You'd feel better with three then.
If, I mean, I know that it's just throwing a dart, a dart board, but. Um, maybe we could meet a little bit. Uh, with the haulers, talk with the landfill, maybe look at maybe what some maximums might look like that would be the expenditures. And then we would have a better number to come back and say, okay, this is what they're saying, you know, they're gonna be this limited on this much, so if we hit that limit. What does that look like? And ultimately, what would that end up costing the residents? If we hit those maximums every time. I would feel more comfortable. Agreeing to a four dollar a month charge if I knew that that was gonna be our maximum and then backing off of that, but just to say a four dollars, yeah, let's go with it now. I'm not comfortable enough doing that right now.
Yeah, and the only basis that I think we have right now is. Like I said, there's some experiences in other similar sized towns that's thirty five to forty five thousand dollars, so.
So are you, are you saying we should table this, Tim?
Oh.
Well, you could pass it just to keep it going. Either way, it's a six weeks, right? Like, you have the three meetings, and so you could say. That we're gonna pass this as the first reading, leaving the fee open for two more weeks. And even a month, you know, like, you can also wait.
Because I think we've talked about it long enough, I think we need to.
No, I don't disagree with that. I just, I just, again, some of the fees in here, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with approving, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of tabling it.
No.
I'd like to make the motion that we consider this the first reading.
Okay, and you wanna just in your motion say that the fees are, final amount of the fees are yet to be determined prior to the second.
And, and, and are we gonna talk about, is this gonna be once a year or twice a year?
Well, hopefully it can be twice.
The code says a minimum of once, and I wouldn't put. A higher amount, because if you wanted to.
Well, yeah, that's.
No, Adam, it, it needs to be twice a year, it's like, you know, spring and fall for sure.
Right, but as long as it says a minimum once a year, that doesn't limit us.
Can always do more.
We can do more.
To your point, if you say like, oh, gosh, we got away with fifty grand. And then we have a hundred, then why not do a second one?
Then I would revise my motion to say that we would, um. Call this as the first reading for our motion to, or to approve, um, the minimum. Um, the twenty twenty five oh two solid waste chapter first read, this will be our first reading. And will be a minimum of one.
I mean, or clear up one a year. With the fees.
Details to come later.
With the fees to be determined. Before the third reading.
And there'll be two readings.
Two more.
Two more, yeah, we'll do the full three readings.
But we're not setting the fee at this reading, correct?
Correct.
I mean, the draft has the four dollars and it has the seven hundred dollars for the haulers and.
But those can be changed at the next reading.
I would think it would be wise for us to try and decide in two weeks, not in.
No, I agree with that, I.
So that there's some warning for the public to say, okay, we've settled on three, four, five hundred, seven hundred, whatever it is.
I just wasn't sure how much we could change this to the next reading, so that's what my concern was. So if we can and we've got that adjustment, then. I don't think I have any problem with that.
If you're gonna make like substantial wording changes and completely shift gears, then I think you start over, but you're being transparent. If you're giving the high number now, like, I don't see why we're ever gonna go higher than this, and so. Changing it to be lower, like, what would be the ill intent of the council? So, to me, it'd be like if you said it was gonna be two and then you swoop in on the last reading and say five.
Or that's.
That doesn't feel like this. Oh, we have, um, only a motion, right?
I have a motion. Yep. Do I have a second?
I'll make that second. Go ahead, Adam.
Brad, you can have that one, Brad.
Okay. Bills, second, Bradley, first. Any further discussion?
No, I just wanna make sure that we, this is only a one time deal. We come back to it next year during this time and revise it. If needed, if needed.
The code, but, just so we're transparent again, the code is gonna be the code, and it is up to the council a year from now. To do that. It doesn't, the code's not gonna say it's expiring here.
Yeah, we can, we can address any ordinance in the code that we want anytime we want, Adam.
You could change your mind in nine months.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. So we got a first and a second roll call. Keep ring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Fred off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yeah.
Right, number eleven is resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen. This is the approval to purchase two lawn mowers for both the cemetery. And parks. And we go through them.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Thirteen thousand each, okay?
Yeah, I already, I read the, I'm sorry, I read the, I read the, all the information on that, but I'll make that motion.
All right, so Bills and Fred off?
I got a question here. Do we have anything that we're, are we trading in some old mowers?
So the trade, the trade is gonna be basically like keeping one accessible for enforcing the nuisances.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, we need to, the one that Taylor has access to right now is a water wastewater one.
Okay.
Which isn't fabulous, and so we said that, I think, one of the. One of the ones that's coming from Parker Cemetery, the guys can decide which one, but that one will stay accessible. We have trailers that he can go and. Pull it up to this. He, um, takes care of the city owned lots. That we currently have, ownership two plus any that would get a nuisance.
And partial is in the twenty twenty four budget, correct?
We would be taking half of it out of their operating budget and half of it would be coming from the borrowing. Extra five hundred and fifty thousand that we have right now, so thirteen and thirteen. The guys were gonna wait until July, and I just said if we wanna help productivity this summer, let's. You know, their money's there and the borrowed money's there, so let's buy them now. Um, and I think they have. Um, a thought that also by the time you're in peak season, that the prices are not as aggressive, and so maybe by waiting, we're spending a little bit more.
And these are being purchased by AgriVision, so.
In town.
In town. Okay, so do I have, I have a motion by Bills of Fred off by second. Any other further discussion? Roll call. Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Fred off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yeah.
Keep ring?
Yes.
Number twelve is resolution twenty twenty five dash nineteen. This is the approval to submit. Uh, demolition, to the demolition program, uh, for grant applications for SWIPCO. For city owned lots, eight eighteen East Knuckles, nine eleven North Second Street and two hundred and five Fourth Avenue. We have been working on these lots for a couple of years, and the insides are very, very bad.
So I went by the property. I'm sorry, I went by the properties and I think all of them need to be demolished.
Um, insides even.
So do you know how long? These have been owned by the city.
On, on for a long.
Couple of years.
Chief, do you wanna come up? Do you remember the dates, or I can check my email that you?
Well, email.
Yeah, I just have to pull it up. But I asked the chief.
That doesn't matter.
A couple of questions on that East Knuckles one. Isn't there a whole bunch of garbage in the backyard of that one?
We cleaned it up.
That was the one that got.
Well, there's some that have junk. There's a camper at one in a vehicle that we talked about, our staff. Having a smash.
Don't have four thousand, but there's a camper and a old car still on that one.
Yeah.
So we've cleaned up twelve in the last couple of years, and we've gotten SWIPCO grants for eight of them. Nine of them, actually, and this will be three more, and what they do is they cover half of the cost. They do all their own RFPs. We don't do them. Um, so it's for the asbestos abatement is the first RFP, that they choose the company to come and do the. Abatement of the asbestos, and then the second RFP is for the demo itself. And sometimes that includes tree removal and all of that. So, we end up paying half.
So, but it's still, you don't, you're not guaranteed the money, it is a competitive.
It is a competitive brand.
If we, if we take down the one on nine eleven North Second Street that has a fence encompassing the yard.
We take it down.
Take the fence down too?
Whatever we put in the RFP.
Okay.
So the, the one that, um, the second street, we literally, just since I've been here, got ownership for. Um, but I'd ask Chief Bruce for the information, so, um. The Fourth Avenue one was, the original notice was in two thousand twenty one, and again, for everybody that thinks that this is all on us. And that we haven't done anything, or how long it takes. So the original abandoned notice was sent to the property owner in May of two thousand twenty one. The court deemed it as abandoned in June of two thousand twenty three. So we're two years out, and again, I guess to Tim's point, like, these are not on us. Um, the current staff, like, nothing's happened since then. Um, and then East Knuckles was, the abandonment notice was sent in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
And the court determined that it was abandoned in two thousand twenty one November. So we are now approaching three and a half years. Um, you know, the chief kinda sent me what some of the circumstances were, some was like the, one of the owners passed away and then the other person bailed. Um, and so when it's abandoned, you can do that, but again, like, you can just see from like the time we said it was abandoned until the court. In both cases was two years. Um, so none of this, you know, this isn't really trash, this is properties, but these are not easy processes and they're not cheap.
Not at all.
So the, uh, application is due in the middle of May, so I just wanted to make sure, because we would be committing to the other fifty percent, that that's kind of the purpose of. Obviously, no one turned down money, but there is a cost to it being only fifty percent, so we'd have to come up with the other half.
They average about ten to twelve thousand dollars.
And I did ask SWIPCO if they thought it was okay to apply for three. They said yes, and then, I guess when we sent in the eight and they only funded four. We didn't submit which ones were our priority, and so when Phil and I talked about it, whenever. I submit them, we're gonna say this is, if we can't get all three funded, this is our priority. So we'll rank them as a part of our application. And I can work with the staff on that.
You know, I, I just wanted.
All of the councils do that. But Brad?
I, I was just gonna say, I, I, I just wanted to, uh, throw in there that. Uh, just in my tenure, we've demolished a whole bunch of houses and we've made a big improvement in the. Uh, in the appearance of our city that way. I, I think that if we have the funds, we should definitely go for this. And I think we do have the funds.
Not all of the council of government organizations do this. We're lucky that SWIPCO gets the funding to be able to do it. So it's special to their region, which is fifteen counties. So, so it is competitive. So I need a motion.
On a resolution, sir.
Yeah, a motion to approve the resolution.
My move to approve.
Okay, Fred off?
A second.
Keep ring? Any last discussion? Roll call. Bills?
Yes.
Fred off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yeah.
Keep ring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number thirteen is the policy for release of public nuisance property locations. And this, as Lisa explained, um, we are talking about now. When we do have nuisance properties, this would be located on a webpage on the city's website. Where it will list on a weekly basis, those that are in violation of.
Any sort of active cases, like, I feel like this whole process. Um, the city kinda gets attacked a bit for either doing nothing. Or people don't think we have a problem if they're on the other side of the fence, and so. Um, as I kind of explained at the Q and A, I guess there is an element of. Putting it out there and maybe people knowing that their information's gonna be out there, that there's a bit of public shaming, and maybe we get. Stronger commitment to people understanding we're serious. So it's not something we have to. If people ask the right question as a public record, we can't deny this, so this isn't considered confidential information. If someone asked, for example, uh, I'd like a copy of every letter that Taylor sent out over the last twelve months, we'd have to provide that. Right now, people just call me and say, can I have the addresses? So there's no having to give something on an oral bit of information, but. I would feel more comfortable just saying, we're putting it out there on the website. If people wanna look at it, they can. And then if it's on the website, we would just direct them there.
We're just gonna put the address, we're gonna put a picture of the house too, or?
We can do whatever the council wants. We could say a picture, we could say the address. I would think not just the address, it would say. Uh, an address and what the violation is. So an address in that you didn't mow, an address you have a junk car, an address you have trash, and address you.
Here's why I'm saying this. If we have a picture of what's going on, let's say with grass, and we can actually specifically see it in the picture.
I think we better talk, I think we better talk to Bree about that first, Adam. I think we better talk, I think we better talk to Bree about that first, Adam.
She's aware.
Yeah, she's aware. Lisa just wanted us to have a policy so that it is the council.
Yeah.
The councils.
There's no protection.
Out there, you can take, anybody could take a picture of that house.
So Bree, Bree's okay with pictures?
Well, there's no protection in the law. Like, you can Google the, all, if we put the address out there, you can just go on Beacon and you know what.
Alright, okay, okay, okay. I just, that's kinda surprising.
Information. Right.
A picture might say though, if they have a second violation, it might go back and say they didn't. Um.
Before we put the, I, I can ask her specifically again about the pictures and make sure, but I, uh, we both discussed. That, you know, we don't wanna play games with the public, but it is how you ask the question. And instead of me saying, I'm gonna give it to you because you asked for the letters. But you just want three addresses. And this all again came about on social media, people saying, what do you, must not have any because you're not giving them to me. And all I said was. I would prefer to talk about us as a community and what the council wants for direction.
Yeah, well, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I just, I just don't want it to be in violation of the law ourselves, that's all.
We won't, we won't.
Okay, well, I don't believe it would be there again, but. When I first got on the council, we used to get a list of the nuisance properties.
Yes, we did.
It would be emailed to us. There was no pictures. To me, I'm really don't care about the picture. If you put an address on there, somebody really wants to know what the problem is, go drive by the house. Um.
But that was sent to the council, not put on a website.
That was the other, so it went to the council and it went to a few others. I don't remember, did, I don't know if the radio used to get a copy of that nuisance report, is that correct? So it did go to a number of others, but it did not ever, it was never sent to the public at large. And when I asked about that. I kinda got a generic statement about it, but basically that it wouldn't be wrong to do that. Like, it is well within the city's right to publish that list wherever because. Of the ordinances. So I'm totally in favor of posting the addresses on our website, absolutely. I have no problem with that.
Okay, and on there it would also say like, if you have a nuisance issue, here's the code. Here's the place to call if you have an issue that you need to complain about or you have concerns about or questions. And then it would be, click here for. The current active nuisances as of May first, two thousand twenty five, whatever.
All we're doing is posting already public information.
Right. But instead of waiting until someone asks.
Right, it's just there.
Giving it out, then it's just out there and people can look if they choose.
So you're making.
That might save some inquiries because then instead of people calling all the time to ask about properties or getting lists, they can just go to the website and see exactly like, oh yeah, that's my neighbor that. They're on there, you know?
So are you making a motion to approve the policy?
I didn't see a policy. I thought it was just.
I think it's just, if you just wanted to do a simple motion, you could say the council supports the.
Yeah.
Public information.
Support the posting of the nuisance properties on our website. How about that?
Sounds good. Okay. I have a second, alright. Right off at April, roll call. Right off?
Yes.
Isaac? April?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Are, are we marking definitely votes? Instead of just, I said we're gonna mark definitely votes instead of I.
Alright, number fourteen.
Maybe embarrassment of making moves for a little bit.
Public shaming.
Oh.
Public games at noon.
You won't do that, that doesn't sound like a good idea.
Major crimes, major crimes should not be a problem anymore.
Maybe.
I still believe I would be in favor.
Alright, so number fourteen is, um, I just wanted to approve the timeline. And also pass out the city administrator's six-month review process. I can't believe we're almost there. Um, and basically what I've been proposing, and I did pass these out to the staff today. Um, is for them to have a week to complete the, the form. And the survey form of the um, evaluation. And then to get that back to in the envelope that's provided, they do have to sign a form so that we can keep the form that just shows we've received it from everyone. And then it will be anonymous. Um, so we're talking about the fourth, I'm passing those out. I'm gonna give you yours tonight. Just need it back by eight thirty on Monday morning or before then. And you just take it to City Hall. Unless you would like to do it through the attorney, which is what we did last time. Um, otherwise, I would propose that we just do a committee. Where we review these and put the, uh, you know, put it all together.
Compiling.
It's compiling the information. It's absolutely anonymous. What they'll do is they put the form. And then a form that shows that they've completed it in the envelope. They take the envelope to Suzie. Suzie will open the envelope, throw the envelope away, put the sheet that shows that they've completed it in another folder. Check off that they've completed it. And then she'll put the evaluation form itself into a folder for us to do. I'm proposing that it would be the mayor, the pro tem, and an at-large member, which would be me, Tim, and Sharon. Yeah, so, but I'm up to whatever else you guys.
I'm comfortable, I don't have a problem. I don't feel like it's necessary to pay the attorney to compile.
To compile them.
Yeah, I think we did the first time around, but I, yeah, I don't feel it necessary personally.
With my past experience, we've never had, we've always had administrators do it. That was only because we had a challenge with the actual form and the process in the past.
Well, we never had a process in the past.
Well.
Well, we didn't have a process in the past.
Official process.
There was not a city administrator or clerk uh, evaluation in the past, um, until this last year.
Oh, twenty twenty two.
Twenty twenty two.
Will you be able, I'm, I'm, I'm out of town, will you be able to, uh, uh?
Email you.
FedEx me this. No, I don't, I don't wanna do it electronically. Could you please, uh, uh, either overnight it or FedEx or something to me?
You print it out?
Could, yeah, can you go to the library and print it out?
Can you print it and then you ship it to us?
Perhaps, perhaps.
Or if the mayor's gonna see it, you can just, I mean, I, if you don't wanna email it, that's fine, but she's gonna see it anyway. Although I guess she wouldn't know that it's yours, but. Alright, whatever you want.
Yeah, we can talk about it after this.
Yeah, we'll talk about it after.
Alright, and then we will meet on the thirteenth to just go over all of the things and compile it all and then present it. Um, on March seventeenth at the council meeting. And I believe the, Lisa would like a closed session to go over it. Um, so, that's pretty much the timeline. The form is unchanged, although in the future, I'm gonna make some suggestions. Of some things we maybe do differently. I think the staff needed a different form to complete than the one we established for us.
I mean, technically, this would only be our second time actually using it.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, good luck.
It took seventeen minute meetings to get the last one approved, so.
Yeah, I think the mayor, when, as I was reading it, I just thought, well, there's some questions that aren't pertinent to people who work. With me every day as opposed to who I work for, so.
Exactly.
Just maybe tweak the version of.
I'm good with that.
Alright, so I will pass these around. These are for you to complete and get back to us.
Already printed.
We've already printed them. Yeah, there's yours, John, here's Adams. Okay, Sharon's. Alright, Brian, I'll get you yours.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, number fifteen, and I do want you to be thoughtful on the, uh, comments on the last page, please, so. Uh, number fifteen is water wastewater grade level testing and certification. We did add this to the agenda, uh, because we've had several of our staff, uh, complete and pass their wastewater one certifications. Erin Lorette and Shane Harrison. Um, and then, so we do have a resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty. For wage adjustments for achieving water and wastewater grade certifications. And then we have a resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty one to set those wages for Erin Lorette and Shane Harrison.
I do, I need to make an adjustment, so I couldn't get ahold of Clint last night when I was, or yesterday afternoon. Um, but you might not know this, but on the water side of things, every grade level that you get certified for is split into two tasks. So they do, um, water distribution. Is on page fifty five and six of the newest packet. Are you in the new packet?
Hmm, I don't think you are, Tim. Sorry.
You in the original or amended? So anyway, so when you get water certifications, you have split levels, two tasks per grade level. Per certification level. So grade one, you take a water task for distribution. And you take a water task for treatment. And then on the sewer side, it did not split them. And so we need to not disincentivize. If you're on the sewer side versus the water side. So my recommendation would be that you have, it's worth a dollar. But that on the sewer side, grade one is a dollar. And on the water side, it's split fifty cents per test so that you still, once you achieve grade one. But it's not one test, it's two. And then the same thing, if it's your secondary, it would be twenty five cents per test for water. So you would just, like, I'll tweak the resolution, but it'll be for water, it's split into fifty cents per test.
Okay.
Uh, or twenty five cents per test. And then on the sewer side, it's still the dollar and fifty cents. So that you're not. Um, basically then, if your water is your primary, you would start making more. And we basically are saying that it's a buck fifty if you're. Grade one for both water and sewer.
We have to have certifications for our systems by the state, so. And it's really great that our guys are getting dual, because we've merged those two departments, so.
Yep, you know, I brought this up last time and I gotta just say it again, you know, kudos to, to Clint Rowland down there at, uh, in our water wastewater for getting these guys cross-trained. And taking the initiative to, to make this stuff happen. So I would like to, uh, go ahead and, uh, make the motion to approve this resolution.
Both of them? Both resolutions?
Yes, both, please.
Okay. I will second that motion, Brian. Bills and Bradley, any further discussion? And I do have to point out that Harry or Shane Harrison has now, is one in water or is wastewater and he's got. His thr- two right now in, in water. So he's going for his three in water. I like the fact that they can cross. Yeah. You know, across. So each of those departments used to have to be on call every other weekend. And now that they're merged into one department, they're on call every sixth weekend. That's great. So that helps them a lot.
Yeah, it's a win-win for everybody down there.
Yep, alright, so I've got a first by Bill, second by Bradley, roll call. April?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Okay, number sixteen is discussion and direction of the city council packet deadline. Um, um, this is something that, you know, Lisa works for the mayor and council, and that's all five council members. And I think she would like direction on expectations of when, uh, the final deadline time for her to have the packet out. One thing I'd like to point out is that Lisa spends her time during work hours. With her door open to the public, her door open to staff, and she always makes time for people. And yet she also, when work is off or she leaves work, she is out in the community doing all kinds of things. And then she goes back to the office many times or is at work working. And I know she is because we're communicating, so. Um, you know, and I, I know Lisa included in her packet what time she delivered the packets every since she started. On average, she's gotten them out on Fridays. Uh, in the beginning, we did have a couple Saturdays. And by times, and then also the number of hours that she works. And I have absolutely no questions whatsoever in the number of hours she works. This woman works, if she's working sixty hours, that's a hundred fifty of my hours. I've never seen anybody more productive in my entire life. And.
You know, I, I, I've said it before and I'll say it again.
Yeah.
You know, you, you've written this.
Memo?
Memorandum that we never had before.
Yes.
By the way, that, uh, you make sure you include a description or explanation as to what the agenda item is for. I will tell you that when I got on here in two thousand twenty two, we did not get any of that. And you don't know what you don't know. So, sure, we were told, ask any question you wanted, but you didn't know the questions to ask a lot of the times. And there were things that were coming out in the meetings when it's like, whoa, wait a minute, I didn't know that's what that was about, or I didn't understand it. And too often it was. I should have asked that question if it was already done because I didn't know. This, and I, I chuckle a little bit when we get attacked on transparency at this point, because. I'm sorry, but this city is more transparent than I've ever seen. This is transparency. Having these things on the agenda that we're talking about, even though it may not be things that people like, that's transparency. Having the discussions in public, that's transparency. So, again, I chuck a little bit of that because of all the accusations out there about Lisa's not being transparent or the council's not being transparent. I really don't know how much more transparent this council could be.
So I, I wanna, I just wanna, I wanna get back to.
Privacy issue because there are things that need to remain private to an extent, not, if it's not public, it's not public. But everything that is public that I've seen is being told to the public.
Tim, you know what, I, I respect everything you say and, and, and I'm, I'm with you on most things. But let's get back to the, the thing at, at hand here. What time do we want the agenda?
Prefacing my, my, my point.
I hear you, I hear you.
I don't have any issue with when it's coming to me because it's actually making me more well-informed than I ever have been before. So if it is a little bit later than maybe it was in previous years, I'm fine with that. I want all the information that I can get in order to make the decision.
So Tim, can I just say that I like having it on Friday simply because you have the fresh in your mind. And if I have a question, every time I've called Lisa, whether it be on the weekends or whatever, she always is there to answer the question. So I'm sorry, but. I like having it on Friday because I'm, I can remember things better if I've had it instead of a week ago or. Five days ago or whatever. So I'm perfectly fine with it.
So.
So I, I, I don't need my, I don't mean, I don't need mine until Saturday. Because I, uh, you know, sometimes I look at it Saturday, sometimes I look at it on Sunday. But, I mean, if I, you know. I want Lisa to have her door open all day Friday to talk to, uh, this landlord or that homeowner or whoever about whatever. I don't want her to shut her office to get the agenda out. And I do not want her to, to cut back on the information that she gives me agenda. Cause just like Tim, I appreciate every single thing that she adds to it because I'm more informed with the decisions I make. So I'm good with Saturday, I'm good with Saturday.
Okay. And again, I mean, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, doesn't matter to me. I didn't read it till today, but I spent two hours on it. I love getting all the information. And she puts a resolution with everything, any other documentation, you get the full packet for every line item.
And, and I like how this, like on this last one, I like how she amended it. I mean, I've never had that happen before when we get, you know, an amended agenda that. You know, until Lisa showed up, we never got those kinda things. We just showed up and it was a su- surprise, you know, this is what's gonna happen tonight.
Adam, do you have any thoughts? I think Lisa would like a, a, yeah.
I, I don't mind Fridays, I don't mind Saturdays. Those two days work great for me.
I would think Friday's my norm. It's something that came up, I'm letting you know on Friday, like, hey, I need a couple hours in the morning or something.
I, I'm good, I'm good with Fridays. Yeah. I'm good with Fridays. John, what do you think?
You know, I, I'm kinda old, pretty damn old school with this. When school's out, school's out. Your lessons are supposed to be done. So, basically, it closed business on Friday, that should be available to us.
That's why we're talking about it.
That's why we're talking about it.
Feel like I was doing something wrong by not having it at four thirty, but I'm still working. Like, I'm giving up my Friday night. So if that, and if that's what the council believes, then I think in fairness, I'm shutting my door to say I have a deadline. And if someone wants to talk to me about whatever they wanna talk about, a building permit or anything else, then I need to shut my door because I can't do both.
Yeah.
And I don't have a problem if that's who I work for and that's your preference, but. The last three council meetings, you've made me feel like I'm doing something wrong, John. And so that's why I said. My last response to you on Friday night was, let's talk about it at the meeting because I've never been told a deadline. And I, I'm trying, I don't. I, I don't know. I just think that I'm trying to balance being available to people, whether it's the staff, all of you, or the public. And still, like, I, I don't need to be working on Friday night, but.
And these packets.
To me, I've given it, my time is, I wanna make sure that I give you the information.
We all have to understand that Lisa's a professional. You can't tell a professional or her position. Her hours or whatever. I've been in minister, I've been in a position where I've worked many hours late at night to get reports back, so. Um, I appreciate everything you do. And ultimately, she works for all of us, so. And I don't think there should be a deadline. I think things come in at the last minute, she needs to add, and she's amended things for us at the last minute. When she doesn't have to be there.
Really, I agree with Sharon. I think you are putting in way too many hours. I mean, I would like to see you have a day off.
Me too.
It's hard, though, like, people all think I'm crazy for how much I work, but what are you supposed to do? Like, when there's work to be done and say, like, I'm not gonna do my packet the way I want to this week, or. Sorry, you're not gonna get your building permit even though you found a shed. You know, today, somebody came in and they found a shed on Facebook and they need their building permit today so that they don't lose their purchase on Facebook. And. So you either stop what you're doing and pay attention to that, and then that delays you or, you know, so, and I can tell you, like. I've had heated conversations with the public who feel like city administrators were not responsive in the past. Not always, but. Like, I get the ramifications of some of that feeling. And so when you try to be available, day, night, whatever it is, like, it does. Turn into a lot of hours. And again, I know that John's been frustrated, but it's not like I'm out. Galavanting around town, not doing my packet. And I've responded to you that I'm still working because it's not that I'm not sending it because I'm not working. It's just that. Um, you know, and, and I'm also not super rigid. I know in the past that there was really strict deadlines about if you didn't come in by like Tuesday. You know, and even the lawnmower conversation, like, we talked about that on Tuesday at the staff meeting. And Adam had gotten a price for one of the mowers and we started talking about Brad needing one and, you know, like, to me, in my mind, I'm like, well, go see if you can get the price. We can get it in the packet and, you know, try to be flexible because I feel like that makes us more productive as a staff.
Extremely rigid in the past, because I had to have my items in by noon, like, exactly twelve o'clock noon. On Wednesday, so that they could give me a copy of the pack of the agenda by nighttime on Wednesday. So that I could send my edits before eight AM on Thursday so that the rest of the public could give them items until Thursday at noon. That was nuts.
Well, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the reason that, that that had to be done was because. Uh, staff were taken off on Fridays. And so they had to have your input by Wednesday to get it out on Thursday, so they could be off on Friday. And, and once again, I wanna just get back to this same point. Uh, you know, uh, when we hired our new city administrator, there were some. Uh, you know, uh, when we hired our new city administrator, there were some issues that had to be done and I just, I don't want to burn her out. I don't want her to be overwhelmed with the load that we're throwing on her. And, and that being said, I don't think that we need to be placing unrealistic deadlines on things that we don't even look at till Saturday, Sunday or Monday. And I, I think we just need to set, you know, if, if, if a deadline at all needs to be set for, you know, Saturday with options to amend.
Okay.
It shouldn't be a deadline, it should be the final result.
Yes.
And that's what we're getting. We're getting good results from you Lisa. I don't think deadlines should be important.
I would agree, Sharon.
Yeah, I don't want you to sacrifice the quality of what you're providing to us for the sake of a deadline.
Not at all.
I would, I don't want to. I just want, you know, I, in fairness to John, I felt like he was frustrated and so I felt like we should talk about it, which is to your point about being transparent.
So do we need to have a tally of who agrees that it's when she gets it done?
I don't think it's even an issue.
Okay.
I think it's fine for discussion, but it doesn't.
You have your feedback.
Yeah.
There's nothing in.
There is one other thing I think that needs to be said. Then if you get the packet over the weekend and even Monday, if you have a question, you need to address Lisa with the question or, or me.
She always answers.
Yes.
Always.
Yes. But rather than.
Morning, noon and night, seven days a week, so it doesn't matter if you have a question.
To be and before the council meeting. So our, our etiquette back to her is to ask the questions prior to the council meeting rather than to put people on the spot. So. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yep. Number seventeen fiscal, and this is why she's been spending so much time since January, is she has extrapolated all of the data for multiple years worth of budgets and put this full entire thing together with we've never seen before. Um, and we now know a lot better where we are and where we were and where we're going. So um, this has been a ton of work for her and also finding issues where there were inconsistencies or things that didn't make any sense, and she's really narrowing down on that. Um, so I, again, I applaud her on this because this was a lot to deal with, so. Number seventeen is the fiscal year twenty twenty-five year in discussion and fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget discussion. And we've got both our police chief and our fire chief here to talk about those. Um, and then the upcoming council meetings will be the regular session on March seventeenth. We're gonna have a special session on the tenth and also on the thirty-first because we have to get this all done prior to a deadline for the state.
And Lisa, you'll have those, you'll have those available for me to zoom on the tenth and the thirty-first?
Yeah, it's mostly, you took your binder with you, right?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, so it's mostly, I, I, I would send you if there was any changes, but yeah.
Okay, as long as they're available on Zoom, that's, that's what I'm concerned about, yep.
Yep, all right.
So I would say I'd like to have um, police first.
Okay, so Chief Remy.
You have, you want this? So you have in front of you. So we're looking, if you're in your binders, page sixty, well, he's got his revenues, which is, what's, your revenues is the first page, what's the bottom of that page? Oh, sorry, yes, in the packet, that's fine. Or if you're looking at your binder. So your first page is revenues and then I think your police numbers are after that. How about fires? I don't know if you have any highlights or stuff?
Uh, no, not really. I mean, we've, we've stayed relatively same. The last several years, I mean, with, with adjustments as they come in, fuel would be one of those major adjustments that we have to go by each year. Um, it, it appears like we're probably gonna come in under budget this year just with the, what fuel put down. Uh, police salaries are obviously, our officer salaries are, are the, probably eighty percent, eighty-five percent of what our budget is. Um, so.
Sorry, Justin. There we go.
Cause it was in the packet as well.
Packet of fifty-six.
Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah. Uh, so, so the fuel, fuel's a major expense, uh, as well as vehicle maintenance, um, some of the older patrol cars, they start to experience difficulties or troubles uh as time progresses on. Uh, and, and again, I think, I believe we're gonna come in under budget on that as well, but uh, uh, that, that is a fluctuating number as well each year. So uh, we obviously with Lisa and, and everybody involved, we go over the, the budget as intently as we can to, to make sure we keep it in check. Um, so I, I guess Lisa, if you, if you have anything you want to touch base on, I guess, and.
I don't think so. I think that um, you know, the, the police budget is, Justin does a good job um in terms of trying to, as all the department heads do, trying to stay uh where everybody's at. Just kind of understanding again where we've talked about that you have your um, sales tax money that also supplements the budget, which is on a separate page. And so when you're looking at the actual OO one accounts um that are in this packet, like that's not the sole funding source for the police department, that we take forty percent of every dollar that we get in sales tax and allocate that to be split between the two departments as police and fire. Um, when we talk about the, um, I think you're playing on one squad car.
Yep, that's the intent, yes.
And so we'll have to look at whether we spend that out of the normal loss or if we want to take that as, you know, kind of our list of things that we um, could use our borrowed funds for. So we'll make that decision later, but.
And the lost funds, that's kind of always been the, what we take the larger expenditures out, whether it be training and travel, whether we're sending officers to, any, out of, uh, out of community trainings to um, computers for cars, equipment, just any onboard equipment that we may need, so.
We have, um, we are up for both unions at the end of this year, so the fiscal year that we're talking about now uh, will be part of our next contract. I had my final meeting with the police department and have a tentative agreement to bring before the council with the police department. And then on Thursday, the chief and I are meeting with the firefighters. There is a deadline for March fifteenth, that if we don't settle by then, we have to ask for an extension from the state via the union. And so my plan is, since we're having this special meeting next week, Monday, that on top of having the three department heads that'll come forward, I do plan on having a resolution to go over the two contracts and potentially ask the council to ratify them because it would be super great not to ask for that extension. Um, I think, you know, I tried to emphasize to the unions uh in both cases that, you know, we do have to recognize that we have to stay competitive um with the wages and the council was um cognizant of that in the last contract uh that you reopened. And so we are looking at, they understood that what we put in this budget was three percent. Um, and that I was able to agree with the police contract uh with the police union that the next two years would be three percent each. And then we'll leave the third year of the contract open. So we'll talk about that next time, but um, that's what's in this for salaries. Uh, we have a couple other things that uh we'll talk about in there, but mainly that's, you know, the number one expense coming out of that contract. Uh, we obviously have the Lexipol, remember that you approved that software, so both chiefs will have that as a new item in their budget. And because typically they use last ones for training, uh, that would be the proposal is that it would come out of there as well. Couple other little things, you know, we already talked about that everybody's insurance line item seems to be underfunded. That was the ICAP where it talks about property. Uh, so that would be our portion of, you know, the vehicles, the police department's portion of vehicles. Um, I'm assuming the law enforcement center is on the county's property and then we pay seventeen percent of a lot of things over there. So somewhat different because we have that shared facility with them, but I think that the chief, as all department heads have come in, to be as reasonable as they can uh in terms of being cognizant of that we don't have a lot of new money to have access to, but I think it's a good budget and hopefully we'll get through kind of all the departments and then be able to see where we're at.
Good question. It's gas, you said about gas.
Yep.
Goes back to what we've talked about work. Do you think it'd be a good idea to get contracting for gas prices? I mean, does he know, I, I'm gonna ask the fire chief the same question, so.
Realistically, no, because I think if you do that, you're, you're, A, you're probably gonna have to have a bulk, and you're gonna have to have somewhere to store it. Um, and, and that's probably gonna be at more of an expenditure because you're gonna have to get tanks, you're gonna have to build a containment facility, so on and so forth.
Do you want to clarify? That's not what you mean.
No, well, if we're to contract through like a company to say this, how much gas we're gonna use in a year? So we can save some money, wouldn't that be a good idea?
Basically asking one gas station to give us a discount if they get all the business and bidding it out.
Don't let it, yeah.
Well, I'll put it at her like this is, so we, we have cards at the Merc or the United Farmers Cooperative. Sometimes they encounter problems with the system, it's down. Uh, sometimes we encounter problems with BP's system and it's down. So uh, then if there's a, we've gone out to Cubby's and built up out there as well because those two facilities. So, so no, I don't know if that's a benefit to us because it's not always gonna, gonna work like what we want it to.
I think though, if we were to get a better price, that doesn't mean that in a failed system that you would not have permission to go elsewhere. You would just be saying, for getting all of our business on a regular day where your stuff works, would we save money per gallon? Like in some meetings, I'll say you get a however many cent discount, but to your point, we can't also say that means you can't fill up your gas tank if something's happening.
But I, I mean, it's hard to say. There might be a, there might be, there might not be, I guess. I mean, I, we, we've never explored that option, I guess, one hundred percent to, to see it. I know both BP, I think we get, I don't remember where we get the, the gas act back or wherever that is.
Yeah, I think you get that either way.
And the Merc, or what used to be the Merc, now United Farmers Cooperative, they're, they used to be five cents or right at, when you swipe your card, but I, I don't think they do that.
What, what do the schools do?
They'll do, uh, they fill up at the, uh.
Do they get a discount for buses?
And they, and they contract it.
They contract the boot.
A gas station.
New class.
New class.
They bid it out like you're saying.
They bid it out.
Pretty sure.
And some of that's a little different, obviously, to their plan, like they have twenty-four, seven and the buses probably are not typically maybe a late night game or something, but not meeting.
Yeah, you know, that would be something that we'd have to absolutely have put uh for, out for bid and then, you know, just like, uh, I don't know who said it, but if one place was down, of course you'd go to somewhere else and get the gas.
I know that it had come up too about like if people are out of town, but I, I mean, this came up at the last meeting, I mean, it was just the council, but obviously with city credit cards, like if you're out of town, you're not forced to go to, say we had a contract here with BP, that doesn't mean if you're driving a lane back to find a BP, like you're just gonna get gas because you're out of town and take the card or whatever.
That's what we had to do in the past.
Right. But that's my point, like, that's, I think this council recognizes that if it was a savings, there's still the practical side, whether it's the pumps are down and you're going somewhere else or you're out of town and you go where you need to go.
No, just run out. Yeah. Just run out until they open.
Yep. Just call the other chief, whichever one, and I'm.
Yep.
Buddy system, mutually.
Any other questions for me?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So police budgets, one point one. One point one, three, five-ish. And then the revenue, obviously, there's not a lot of revenue, so that's, that's part of the last, yeah.
It's funny you brought up fuel because after Fridays.
Busy day.
Running out of gas. To get fueled, keep fighting fires, so, you know, to answer that question, to keep it shorter than Chief Remy drug it out for you. If there was a comparison that would save the money, then, then obviously keeping those resources available to go to other places, common sense. The tool we never had in the past was the, the credit card for the department heads to actually conduct business if needed outside the city limits. So that's a tool we never had in the past, so that's why the emphasis was on the BP cards. And then you had to kind of set your route to where there was BP stations and make sure you got fuel. Um, because you didn't want to keep having to pay people back or then using their personal money for trips, so. You know, that being on, on the table now, that's, that's, it's, it's different now, so we have tools we didn't have before, so. If there was a comparison to save money, I'm, I'm even not do it, you know? Us, it's nice going across to BP because it's close, but, you know, if we can keep it in town, we have Cubby's, BP and the uh new co-op for our.
Right, and both the sides, I think you want to also be able to move around in there easily.
So, so I don't want to, I don't want to make anybody angry, but I, I really would like our money to be spent in those city limits so we can collect, you know, at least the local option and all that kind of stuff, you know?
And you're probably ninety-nine percent BP and, and Merc for, between all the city operations for fuel. I can't envision it being anywhere else unless you're traveling for training or something.
Yeah, I'm just saying, just saying.
A lot of people don't realize Cubby's in the county.
Correct, it's outside of city limits.
Yep.
So, go ahead.
Yeah.
Fire.
Okay. So, I mean, you've seen the, the numbers before you, um, it's, it's very similar to you, Rick. You know, we, we introduce our numbers to Lisa and then it goes through the acts process. Um, you got to justify your numbers, it's, it's, uh, we gotta make it fit. What's challenging for our department and, and police is we're twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. We don't show operations now. We both have unions, those unions come with compensation packages that have to be budgeted for. I have a saving grace, um, and I'll, and I'll show up, my staff is, so if we need somebody to burn some time off the books or not get in overtime, we reduce our staff down to just two firefighters um, on shift, and that's, that is to cut out the overtime to try to reduce it because we still have to give them their time off, obviously, but um, the group here is excellent to work with, plus trying to schedule that time so we can flow with it. That's what keeps our numbers down. Um, now what happens, you know, a Friday is a freak thing, but you start at eleven-thirty in the morning and I think it was nine or ten before we finished up for the day. That's just a freak event. But once again, as the time goes on, our folks will try to burn that time off, off the book, so. Uh, you know, our primary is nine-one-one required under state requirements to have at least a frontline paramedic level squad. That's what we're required by the state. And then after that, it's, it's uh fingers crossed that we have staff around that can answer the calls, so. Um, you know, this is not Omaha, we cannot be compared to in Omaha, this is Red Oak. We've always made it work within the, within the budget. Things look different. We now have a set of eyes that we're gonna look at these EMS contracts and push. You know, we're finally there. I, I, there's no, there's no magic money pot to tell you an amount, but I can tell you the push is there to get it. And these communities, believe it or not, are sitting at the table now saying, we get it because free and love doesn't move those down the road. They understand there's a financial part, they too have financial obligations to their cities, so they're, you know, fingers crossed we don't walk in and say we want a million. But they're ready to meet, they're ready to talk. Everybody understands EMS has completely dissolved, completely dissolved. And our only obligation is to our city and our fire district. However, who's been the concrete pillar everybody's relied on, Red Oak? Because of the career staff. But we have to keep this funded, which means we have to look at the revenues to try to come in and do the best we can to offset our expenditures and do it in a realistic fashion. We rely on PCC to send us our rates for EMS. That's, that's how we base ours off of, but they had not been touched for
thirteen.
For thirteen years, and, and the only one that had been touched recently was the tier. I mean, you know, the fees for fire service, which is, that's so we could bill, let's say if we go to a train derailment or a train incident, we can bill for that FEMA. We now have billable rates. We never had those tools in the toolbox. It just gives us the option to, to collect to the best of our ability, which makes sense, but to recoup for the operational cost, that's going back to the taxpayer to make sure they don't have to sit there and fund it all the time. There's other ways we can do it. We just, it, it's been stalled, but we're there, who cares? Water under the bridge, we're moving forward, so. Um, you know, hopefully everybody's proud of the crew. I think they do a heck of a job answering the calls and. Um, you know.
Five, five, Sharon, five Friday.
And, and then Saturday, um, with some rekindles going back out.
So does the property owner pay or they, we have a, they, they don't pay?
Not for dinner, no.
No, it's just compensated through theirs. The only time, if they had insurance on, on like their house and they had a structure fire, there could be potentially up to a five hundred dollar fee that could be collected, but that's, they have insurance and it's in their policy. But for the first time that we can remember, um, Clorinda had a grass truck and a tanker at Sea Avenue one hundred and tenth. That's clear up in that corner. For the first time ever, because we, we had so many assignments and, and to tell you how big these fires were and progressing, most of them were reported by the National Weather Service on their radar. That's how big they were and how fast they moved. So it takes a lot of resources. That's where the teamwork comes in. So back to the contracts, something that absolutely needs to be known is we're talking EMS, emergency medical services only, because fire is a completely different beast. And that mutually is paramount to control these events, so it's two separate things. But like I said, we're, we're trying to get tools in the toolbox to be successful and and operate how we need to, that makes sense for the city of Roque and, and surrounding, so.
So when you have a grass fire or.
So whether you have a grass fire or all the other communities, you have to notify them in order to come and help.
So we have a three-tiered paging procedure. So the primary incident gets paged and then the two next communities closest get paged. And what brought that about is sadly, because of the dwindling volunteerism, we have departments that sometimes don't answer the calls. Um, and a working fire or something where you need those resources on the road right away. So they went to the three-tiered paging procedure, just so you know, somebody is answering that call. So we backed them up. They also back us up. So, um, you know, the numbers aren't the healthiest. Volunteers don't hardly exist in the emergency services world anymore.
So John, can you, can you tell them, um, I think a lot, you know, people have been questioning our property valuations, property taxes and why our levees high and such, but most of the communities around us do not have ten full-time firefighters, paramedics.
And we're fire-based EMS.
Yes. So we're totally different model.
We, we are. And with that comes the fact that now you have Glenwood who's built their system off of us. Lamar's built their system off of us because they're not getting the coverage that they need. We take one individual and they can cover an EMS rig or fire. Where a lot of these communities, they have a single person, if a single person in the firehouse, like Atlantic, sham, or you have other communities that have zero, and that's what they're relying on for their emergency services with the EMS being based out of the hospital. But they're running into coverage issues and staffing and it's harder and harder to get folks that necessarily will go to those hospital-based services for whatever reasons. And so they had to address their response issues and that's why you see that they were built off of it. Also, Clorinda just put an article out there, the Chief Williams is looking to put paid staff in the Clorinda Fire Station. Once again, volunteerism is dwindling down to scary numbers. And sadly, it's going to come down to paying folks to be in these locations and you're going to see the county seats. That's where the push is going to be.
Well, you know, you know, vol- volunteerism is great, but when it comes to emergency services and, and, and fire response, so you know, we need people on, on the job right now. Sorry.
And we, and we, I, I think we do a good job balancing it. Because we have our career, we have our part-time and what handful of volunteers we have. And so far, we make it work. So, um, you know, that's, that's where we're at, I guess. So.
And ambulance transfer has been another challenge. I'm not going to get into that, but that's been another biggie. It's a staffing issue.
Staffing equipment.
Yes.
So, yeah. Well, I want to talk about what I handed out this evening, which you can take that as well.
Did you give? I think it's pretty interesting.
So. Has any communities reached out to you recently about our services to them or, uh, in Montgomery County?
I would say we've had discussions with everyone, uh, ever since. As far as actually speaking to people, most communities about us dividing services.
So we're gonna have a meeting with everyone together where, and remember I kind of said like, and you know, we were alone at our budget workshop, but I think it's fair for everybody listening or watching this meeting that um, the city residents, the city taxpayers in Red Oak pay approximately, uh, you know, one point three million dollar operating budget. And then we have the townships around us that the chief is obligated to provide fire to, which is eight townships. For those of you that have come to the meeting or you hear about us reference the Rural Fire Board. And a couple of meetings ago, you approved that three-year contract with them. So to put that one point three million dollar budget in perspective, those surrounding townships are gonna next year in this fiscal year that we're talking about, pay ninety-seven thousand dollars towards that operating budget. And so they do pay something and then we are obligated as an essential service to provide fire. In the state of Iowa, fire is considered essential and no one can choose not to provide fire. So every township is connected to a city or somewhere that they're in a fire district. However, with EMS, it is not an essential service and communities can choose to not provide ambulances. And I think what's super important, when I started reading about, you know, we sort of veered away from garbage two weeks ago and started talking about assessed values. And people start looking at tax rates and we had, you know, reports of what our proposal was after the council voted at twenty dollars. And so as a new person to the community, I really wanted to dig in a little bit more so that you as elected officials can answer, why are we different? Right? Like all I thought was like, oh, let's all move to Shenandoah because they're fourteen dollars or, you know, why, why is Red Oak twenty dollars per? And we are one of the highest, I think, when I looked at last year, we were number six. But we're in a unique position here. And so I wanted to research the numbers myself and be able to help explain why are we different? Because I don't subscribe to somehow we have four elected officials who don't care. Because I know that you care and nobody wants it to just be twenty dollars instead of fourteen, sixteen or eighteen. So what I just gave you, um, in some of the stuff that I kind of again read online was that people will compare us to Clorinda, to Shenandoah, to Atlantic. Um, and then as the chief indicated, like Glenwood has veered towards a model like our fire department in getting full-time firefighters. So one of the things that we learned in my, you know, last week or so analysis was that number one, remembering that not only is EMS not essential, but you have nine-one-one calls and then you have transfers. And so what we moved away from with the hospital a year ago was that we were no longer going to do their transfers and that they hire, it's called Pioneer, correct? To do their transfers. And so we now are focused on nine-one-one calls because we simply didn't have the capacity to do both. So then they went in their own direction. The difference in most of those communities that I just named is that the hospitals are providing EMS. That's not us saying anything negative about Montgomery County Hospital, and that's not saying anything that somehow we're spending too much money here. But each community has taken a path over many decades. And in Red Oak, we chose to say that we as a community were going to provide nine-one-one. And as we morphed away from having people to volunteer, we then said, we're going to provide EMS services at a full-time level. And so I wanted you to be able to look at these numbers and we go over them, you know, just briefly, but that really is, in what I can tell, the sole reason that we've committed to top quality EMS services in partnership before with the hospital and transfers. And we've sort of, you know, like they're handling their transfers and we're handling nine-one-one. But I want you to look at, um, so if you look at each sheet, they're double-sided. Um, and so this was the numbers a year ago. So we're comparing a year ago's tax rate to a year ago's public notice for their budget. And so take Red Oak and I tried to highlight in green that last year we were at the twenty dollars and thirty-five cents. So you see that and you can see which community you're looking at because I highlighted the community at the top. So in Red Oak, we're twenty dollars and thirty-five cents. And public safety is rounded off to one number. We don't separate police, fire, things like that. But you can see that we were at three point seven million dollars because we have rock star service for the people in this community that they get instantaneous full-time service and they're not hoping that the volunteers respond. And we are also being good stewards and good neighbors to everybody else. And that's part of this conversation. So then the next one that should be is Shenandoah. Last year they were at sixteen thirty-four. Turn their number over for public safety, two million dollars. So if you take like, how are they four dollars or now next year they're going to be six dollars less, right there is the number. They don't have full-time firefighters there. Correct? And their hospital is who's handling EMS. So they do not employ paramedics at all for the city of Shenandoah. I did reach out to the four administrators. I haven't heard back from them all yet, but obviously we know the chief knows, you know, what the services are that they're providing, but that is a choice that we've made as a community. We're not just rogue in giving our community a dollar of twenty dollars compared to fourteen, sixteen, eighteen. And then if you move on to Atlantic, last year they were at seventeen twenty-five. Um, again, you can see that they are four hundred thousand or so less than us. But flip back over to the front side where you have the, the rate and you can see that they have a significantly higher tax property tax value. So ours was a hundred and eighty-four thousand and they have two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and forty-five million, excuse me. So while they also don't provide full-time EMS, they have a higher value. And so when you look at their public safety, although it's closer to ours or the closest to ours, they still again are not providing full-time EMS, which is a huge benefit to the people of Red Oak. And really to all of Montgomery County, which is why we want to just have a transparent and honest conversation with everybody. And Clorinda, where the chief said that they are having a conversation about having full-time people, you can see that their mil rate last year was eighteen. And again, significant. Look at the number that they spend on public safety. It's one point three million dollars.
Yeah.
So again, that doesn't mean that we are somehow gouging our people of public safety, but we have a different plan here and that we are providing paramedics every day, all day, when you call nine-one-one. And that is not the case in these other communities where they have volunteers and sometimes we are actually responding to these communities. Not so much, I don't know if it's Shenandoah and places like that. Um, and then finally Glenwood, um, again, a higher value in terms of two hundred and five million dollars. Their tax rate is low at fourteen. Um, and again, even with them bringing on, I did hear from their chief or excuse me, their administrator. They have seven, so they do have less officers, firefighters than we do. Um, and you can see that they're a million dollars less at two point seven. So when people talk to you about why are we high? It's because we have a commitment to public safety here. Um, and we've not only benefited the citizens of Red Oak and our rural fire district, but we've, you know, really been, um, you know, as the chief says, the place that's really backed up and provided top quality service, not only to the people who pay us right now, but those who don't. And so that is, um, I think the chief knows that he's already preliminarily had some of the conversations with those communities. And again, it isn't gonna make or break the budget and we're not going to have a million dollars coming in from those communities. Um, but it's fair that because EMS is not an essential service, that we don't want to stop providing service to them, but they have to help provide the insurance to have us available. And so we're hoping that that will be a positive conversation with the other communities in the county and surrounding area. Um, but I think it's at least help you understand that when people talk to us about, you know, we don't control assessed values, that's on, on the county assessor's office. But there is a reason and it is a positive for how we provide services to our community and there's a cost to that.
And, and I, I'm sorry, and I want to, I want to throw out there that, you know, I, uh, Mo, I don't know, six or eight months ago, chief, you presented us with the numbers of calls and responses to this, that and the other thing that you guys have, have responded to. And I bet if you compared that with those other communities, like I, I would venture to guess that you would be far above responses to those other communities as, that they have as well.
We're kind of a regional, you're kind of.
Right, right, right.
Ourselves.
How would you calculate what the city's contribution would be? Is it according to population?
Well, that's part of the discussion that we have had as to how even when, when Tim was able to get us some mock contracts and stuff, that's the first part is to get through the door, sit with these folks and say, okay, listen, we're coming to cover you, you know it. But there comes a financial obligation and then start that conversation as to how are we going to figure what's appropriate?
I would rather go in saying, let's talk about being in this together than coming in there with a number that they feel like they're being cornered. Like they know that we spend a lot of money to benefit their communities. And so sometimes it goes better.
Questions, how do you?
Yeah, right. But where I think what we show them is this is our budget. This is how much we're spending. This is how much we're bringing in from EMS calls. And again, they're citizens. If we bill them, if we scoop people from their communities, they are getting billed. And so part of our six hundred and fifty thousand dollars revenue for calls is coming from those communities. What isn't being paid is the insurance to have us available to respond to their people. So it's at the municipal level that we're saying, if you want us to be able to respond and when they dispatch out for paramedics, again, not fire, because we have mutual aid and they're always going to go for that. Um, that they're saying that this is a valuable enough asset for our community that we have to be willing to pay for the insurance to have us available to respond to them because we spend money on fuel, we spend money on, but you know, vehicle mileage that makes our equipment go sooner than if we were not going so far away. And so there's a cost and it shouldn't be, um, only on the shoulders of the city of Red Oak taxpayers to provide for the entire county. Maybe it's a conversation that eventually there's a, a referendum for the sales tax that has the essential service, sales tax ability. Um, but again, those have to be grassroots efforts. That can't be the fire chief of Red Oak standing up and saying, we want to tax everybody. But if that is a more fair and equitable way to bring in additional revenue into the county, then that's a conversation that every police chief, every mayor, every city council member throughout the county would have to advocate for if you want to see it succeed, which I think we saw in Cass County, it did and in Page County, it did not. And that those things only happen if, you know, if we talk about what's the best way to collect money. And this council could choose, not that we would ever say that, but there is a choice to say that money is less important than service, more important than service. And that we could not do that, but that's not the path we've taken. And I highly doubt that anybody would want us to go down a path of not, of not providing that service anymore because it makes our community safer. Um, and then, uh, you know, we're able to with a paramedic level service to provide quality, quality care to people who are in need for not only fires, but for medical.
Yeah. And you know, I, I, I attend a county supervisor meeting regularly and, and they're very complimentary of the fire service and the EMS service that they receive throughout the county.
On the land valuation for each.
You can see on here, like if you look at the top number, the only one I didn't highlight was Red Oak, but at the top of everybody's, you can see what their value is.
Significantly different.
Right.
Thank you for doing that.
That's very helpful.
Helps you answer the question because obviously you're people don't understand necessarily.
Anything else on your back page that you wanted to talk about? I'm just excited to see that you're, are you going to get to redo the bathroom?
Well, okay. So this is our capital improvement system. I'm talking about that. So this is, um, the bigger projects that we're looking, um, we are looking at redoing the locker room, restroom. And basically taking, instead of a large building project and just sectioning it out to what we can afford to basically do in-house slash use our local contractors to kind of take care of it. So you'll see the bathroom slash locker room rebuild area. Also, um, depending on the funding that would be left from that project, the new furnace system, um, and whatever water lines that we could repair at the time, because right now by tradition, we repair it about three foot at a time. It's where they blow out and then we come in and just section them out. So otherwise, um, also it can be kind of a wish list. You can see where the training ground, safety enhancement, which enhancement, which would be the, uh, grass area where the fire hydrants at. Which is just a project that if it ever come to fruition, great. If not, we move on down the line. We're mandated by NFPA for the turnout gear. So once again, all this is priority. So there's funding to go to your priorities and then from there you scale down, no different than the projects that you get good for you. So, um.
And all this will come out of the sales tax.
Yeah. And then the funding sources is, is at the bottom, um, that we would attempt to utilize for those projects. So we got to do something to keep moving along with this building. It's in the eighties, it hasn't been loved since then, since we put the whole new roof on it. Lisa and Shauna, and I think Tim maybe have been able to see the building in the walk-around and can just see the long overdue button. Once again, you may do what you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It's not on this list, but we might do a few things in here, right? You don't have, when you have the concrete rebar.
Well, that project, that, yeah, that's for the outside, but that funding may actually roll over because if we need to, uh, like redo the lovely carpet that we got here.
We talked about the carpet perhaps, and we haven't spent nearly what was budgeted for this year. So I think it's probably best that we get a price and then some of what we've talked about is maybe shifting the way that we arrange this room so that our backs aren't to the doors, whether we go that way or, I don't know yet.
It's, it's not so much our back to the doors that bothers me. It's I can't see our, our screens.
Right. Having different locations for the screens. The screens are to the benefit of the public and um, I don't know that it benefits us to really have the zoom up there as much as I'd like to be able to put like the packet up there if somebody is in the audience that you could see it or if we're looking at a map that we can point to it. So you could maybe have one for the benefit of the public and one for the benefit of the council, but we'd have to rearrange a bit. Any other questions for the chief?
Well, thank you, John.
Chief, Dan chief, appreciate you guys being here. Thank you. All right. So we already mentioned those upcoming meetings, um, reports. Department heads, do we have any department head meetings or those are pretty much the guys talking? So city administration?
I don't really have. Uh, oh, well, we thought that we were getting our civic system, uh, this summer. And I was working with Asbury, who, as you know, Beth is part of our crew that helps us out on things. And so we had said that we want to do it together so that we can kind of piggyback off of each other and be going through the same thing and, uh, and, uh, March twenty-fifth, the conversion begins.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we will be live on April one with collections, we will be, our first payroll will be the second payroll in April. Utility billing will be May first.
It is, it is fantastic.
Get your seatbelt on, ladies, and here we go. So there's no, no gravel roads on this, around the interstate, going fast, so. That'll be super great, although obviously a little scary for everybody because we've had the same thing for a long time.
Sometimes you just got to yank the mandate off.
So we're going to do that, um, and then again, I think, you know, most of what I've been working on is just stuff we talked about tonight, but just a reminder that we'll have, sorry for the extra meetings, but then I think if we just have the one for the next two Mondays, and then we'll skip a Monday and then have the short one on the thirty-first for the public hearing, and then we shouldn't need to have any extra meetings in April, so I'd rather have it all before the deadline so that we have that time. Uh, the notice went to the county on time, it's not due till Wednesday, and then, um, and I sent the notice to the paper, so that will be in there for the public hearing on the thirty-first. And we'll try to at least advertise on maybe social media that this is not for assessments, that it's for the tax levy.
I think that's important because of what happened last year.
Oh, that letter is coming out, yeah.
And I've tried to, you know, learn myself about the assessments, I guess, you know, again, it's not really in our lane. Um, but I do think we all can do our due diligence to help people understand, just like how we have here with the, the tax rate and things like that, so.
I encourage everybody to look at your valuations on Beacon though, because it is interesting how different they are.
And, and I, I want to put this out there, so when you talk about valuations, everybody looks to the county assessor, but a lot of the things that's going on at the assessor's office is a direct result of things that are coming down as mandates from the governor of the state.
Correct. But I will say, I, I too have looked at the valuation of my home and those around me in my neighborhood, and mine is way higher. And there's no need, no reason that mine should be higher than, especially that much higher, so there are some real discrepancies. And especially some folks that have older historic homes, and some have gone up two hundred and fifty thousand, some have gone down two hundred and fifty thousand.
It's always a person's right to contest that.
Yes, so there is a process to do that, and it's on the Department of Management's website on how to do that, so. Yes, I can relate with other people that it is a little wonky.
Nobody wants to pay taxes.
Well, and it, you know what, though, the valuation, you want your house to be valued more because it's an investment.
Talking about taxes.
But not if you don't, if you want to pay taxes, but if you want to sell it, yes, so, and it is an investment, so, anyway. All right, anything else? No? Um, with regard to the mayor's report, um, Lisa and I've had a couple of conversations with some, with regard to flood, the flood plain and some potential projects, or some ways we can address some of our revitalization of some areas in town that are in the flood, floodway or flood plain area. Um, we did have a conversation with J E O, we're still talking about the water project a little bit, and again, the flood and levy mitigation project, so we'll probably be talking about that more. Um, and then we have our local leadership day tomorrow, Sharon, Tim, Lisa and I will be going to Des Moines. Hopefully, the weather is good until we get back, and then, um, that'll be a great day, we've got a good day planned. Um, I continue to serve on the Legislative Commission, our Legislative Committee for the League of Cities, and, uh, just a lot of bills that are really, don't make sense, but I will share those with the council people so that you're aware of some of them. And then the youth council did have a meeting this week, we are, um, having, um, one of our tree or landscaping companies come and look at a, a property to potentially do their project on. So I will have more information for you at the next council meeting on that. So, that's all I got, city council. Sharon, you want to start? You've got, did you get tan?
I attended the town hall meeting, but I will say that I really appreciate the public coming to our town hall meeting. I think there were a lot of questions answered, we hopefully answered what you asked, and, um, you know, we a- answered more than I thought we would probably, but I think it's important to have a town hall meeting probably once or twice a year because we feel like the public, it's, we need to get their feedback, and not everybody comes to the city council meetings or, just to let them know what's going on, what we have planned ahead, so I thought it was great.
Okay.
Uh, same there, the YMCA board meeting, um, finishing up with strategic planning with them, uh, the budget meeting, and then we finished up our MCDC strategic planning as well.
Okay. John?
Likewise as me, but, uh, it had to happen over a month ago, so it should have been corrected by now. It's spelling a wrong Tilton's name in a minute.
Oh, okay.
The name isn't on T I L T.
T I L T, yes, was it in the resolution? What are, what are you talking about, the resolution or?
It was in the bylines of everybody that was at the meeting.
Oh, in a minute, okay.
We'll correct that.
Yeah. Okay.
Ron Tilton.
Okay.
I mean, everybody's read them, released half dozen times, it says somebody besides me should have covered.
That's why we have a comment period after the approval.
Yeah. Anything else that you had for activities?
No.
Okay.
Done working.
Okay, um, that's.
What about me?
Yeah, Brian, I'm sorry, you're, you're not beside me, Brian.
So I, I attended one of the last two county supervisors' meetings, uh, I will attend the next two by Zoom. Uh, I also attended the special budget meeting, and I attended the, uh, town hearing as well.
Okay. Oh, okay, all right, is there any other items for the upcoming agenda?
No, but I need to interrupt because I didn't realize that we had additional claims in this folder.
Folder.
So I would like you to pass them out and review these and then vote on these.
Yeah.
I guess I'll have to abstain from this vote.
But you can't see it.
I can't see it, I have to abstain.
Can we do that, Bill?
Yeah, stop, wait again.
You have a forum.
Well, I know, but no, since it wasn't specifically on the business.
We never have additional claims on the agenda.
Oh, okay, this was, this was supposed to be in with.
Supposed to be with the city claims. We had a busy day, and I didn't hear that they were in there, and all of a sudden, as I was looking to hand this to Ashley, I'm like, oh, boy. So take a minute to review them, and then this would have just been what you would have voted on anyway. It's just regular bills, yeah.
Taxes and benefits. The big chunks. Was this a, another motion to acclaim the amended additional claims?
I would just say, make another motion to pay the additional claims.
I'll make a motion to pay the city additional claims that we presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
Bradley and Fredo. Okay, then roll call.
Bradley? Yes. Belle?
Abstain.
Fredo?
Yes.
Isaac?
Why do you abstain?
Because he doesn't have him in front of him.
Oh, okay.
These are all budgeted items, aren't they?
Yeah.
I suppose you've got enough money in the checkbook.
Okay.
You have to say yes.
Say yes. Um, yes, even yes.
Okay, John's a yes. You're a yes.
John, we need your vote. Were you a yes?
He said, I guess so, we got money in a checkbook.
It has to be, yes or no, yay or nay, okay.
I'm sorry about that, thank you.
With nothing else, I would, uh, during this meeting, uh, eight oh eight.
In figure.
Gosh, I thought the.